All right, we're good, Rick.
Okay. All right. Well, even though we don't have Amy, we're gonna, uh, we'll begin.
She's here, I'm moving her over now. Yep.
Oh, good. Okay. We'll wait until she joins us.
Good evening.
There you go. Hi, Amy. Okay, Amy, we're gonna start because we have a pretty full calendar, okay? All right. Okay, my name is Richard Jurzak. Okay, this is a meeting of the South Kingston Rhode Island zoning board review. Okay, members present, Robert Cagnetta, John Bernardo, Richard Jurzak, Tom Daniels, William Mark, and William Rosen. Okay? Also present are Wayne Pimental, South Kingston zoning official, Jessica Spence, the South Kingston Administrative Support Associate, and attorney Amy Goins, okay, South Kingston Assistant Town Solicitor, okay? All right, there are five regular members of the zoning board and usually two alternate members. We only have one alternate at the moment, okay? Uh, the alternate members or member today is expected to actively participate, but will only vote if a regular member is absent or if a regular member recuses himself from voting. Uh, again, all members, including the alternate members, should actively participate in the discussion, okay? You're here today for either a variance, okay, or a special use permit, okay? This is, this board is a quasi judicial body created by South Kingston ordinance pursuant to state law. We don't follow the strict rules of evidence and we operate in what we believe to be a fair and equitable manner. Okay, we, we wanna make sure that everyone has the ability to speak their piece, okay? Uh, we just ask that you make sure that you limit it to, uh, uh, not as little as possible, but tell us, we wanna hear what you have to say, but, uh, obviously time is at a premium, okay? All right, when your petition is called, okay, uh, please state your name and spell it, okay? Please speak clearly so everyone can hear you, okay? You'll be asked to take an oath to tell the truth. You will then present your petition. You may also have other witnesses testify in support of your petition. The board members will then ask questions of you and/or your witnesses. After you're finished, anyone else wishing to present testimony in support or opposition to the petition or ask questions will then come, well, they won't come to the mic, will they? They'll identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony. Board members may again ask questions. Once all have spoken, petitioner shall be allowed to answer questions raised by the audience and/or respond to audience comments. After hearing all testimony, before a vote is taken, board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. With regard to variances and special use permits, four of the five members voting must vote in favor of the petition for the relief sought to be granted, okay? Okay, uh, I am not gonna go into great depth on, uh, what the requirements are today for variances or for special use permits. I just wanna point out to you, though, that our authority is limited, okay? If you look to, uh, the South Kingston zoning ordinance, section 907, it will give you a definition as to what we need to find in order for us to grant your petition. Uh, please understand that that's the reason, okay, that we are asking you questions, okay? We literally have to fill in the blanks in that our authority is limited as to what we can do. All right, now, before we get into the substance of today, please, uh, since this is a Zoom presentation, and obviously we're all fairly new at this, I'm gonna ask Jessica, okay, to go through uh, the whole process here, uh, what you have to do to speak, uh, what we're gonna do today here, and then, uh, and then we'll start. So go ahead, Jess.
Uh, hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight on Zoom. Um, a couple of things prior to the petitions being heard. As Rick kind of summarized, um, this meeting is run the same as an in-person meeting. Um, I will leave all the applicants muted, and I'm gonna turn off everyone's video until your petition is called. Um, at that time, once your petition is called, I'm gonna unmute you and I'm gonna request for your video to be turned on. Um, if any of the applicants have any supporting documents that you've previously submitted to me, please let me know and I can bring them up on screen share. The, um, applicants will give testimony, um, and the board may ask any relative questions. Once the applicants have completed the testimony, at that point, the chairman's gonna ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to speak. So this is anyone who's sitting here as an attendee. Um, if you wish to speak, what you need to do is raise your hand. So to raise your hand, um, if you're calling in on a phone, it is star nine, and then it is star six to mute unmute. If you're on your computer, there are little icons that say raise hand. Um, people will be called upon on the, upon the order of which they raise their hands. Um, once all the testimony has been heard and once everyone has, um, spoken who wishes to speak and a decision has been made, we will then mute the person and move you out of the, of the panelist position. Um, any documents that are gonna be shown tonight or talked about tonight are available on our website at southkingstonri.com under current zoning applications. So if anyone at home has questions, you can log on and you would see all the documents there, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Jessica, and then please, we will, uh, we will go over the instructions again, uh, just before I ask if anyone else wants to speak. Uh, so we wanna make sure that anyone who does wanna be heard, okay, can be heard, okay? All right, now, before we get started, the first petition today is gonna be Charles Walsh, okay? But before we get started on this, uh, I wanna go over something, okay? Number one, uh, one of our members today has prior commitment, he's gotta leave early, okay? Uh, for that reason, what will end up happening is he will vote on the first petition, okay? And then the alternate, Mr. Rosen, will vote on all the other petitions, okay? Uh, now, wait a second, Jess, uh, who can't, oh, the, the first petition, uh, uh...
Charles Walsh, uh, Mr. Mark cannot vote.
Mr. Marx can't vote on that, so that's, okay, so what will happen is that it will be Mr., uh, Mr. Rosen anyway, but, uh, what will end up happening is Mr. Marx will not be able to vote on the first petition, okay? All right, uh, in that, 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 uh, our one member, uh, has to leave early, okay, that being John Bernardo, there is an administrative matter we have to take care of, okay, which we're gonna do now, okay? I was gonna do it at the end of the meeting, but since we, uh, that person will be gone, uh, we have to have a vote on our leadership here. Section 906G of our ordinance states that, uh, once a year, we have to vote for a chairman and a vice chairman, okay? Uh, at this point, I wanna inform everybody that I'm taking my name off the table. I do not, I cannot be chairman, okay? I'm gonna be missing a number of meetings over the next year. Uh, I plan on staying on the board, though I have informed, uh, Abel Collins that if, in fact, uh, he could find someone to take my place, if he feels it's inappropriate for me to still remain on the board with missing as many meetings as I'm going to miss, then he's free to do so, okay? Uh, but I feel it's unfair, okay, to the board and to the public for me to be chairman, and therefore I take my name off any possibility of me doing so. So that having in mind, what I'd like to do is open up, okay, the, uh, the meeting to our members to elect or, or first to nominate a chairperson. Okay, would someone like to do that?
I nominate Rob Cagnetta.
Okay, uh, that was William Mark, did you do that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Amy, I'm not sure, do we, we don't need to do second or anything like that, we just do nominate it, and then, uh, we'll ask if anyone else is nominated?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, does anyone else wanna nominate anybody else?
Yeah.
You're gonna nominate somebody else, Bob?
No, I'm kidding.
I'm not su- I'm not sure that's a good idea, but in any event, all right, well, look, if that's the case, we only have, is there any discussion? Anyone wanna discuss this? I'm not sure I have to do that. All right, all right, so Mr. Cagnetta, uh, has been nominated, I guess what, uh, we'll do is, uh, uh, do I do a voice vote, Amy, or just, uh?
Please, please, please do a roll call vote, and Bill, Bill can vote.
And Bill can vote, okay, good, okay, uh, Mr. Cagnetta.
Aye.
Aye, okay, Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye. Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, new chairman, okay? All right, we next have to elect a vice chairman. Will someone nominate someone to be vice chairman?
I nominate Tom Daniels.
Okay.
Vice Chairman.
Okay, all right, any, any one other nominations? Okay, then let's vote, okay? Uh, Mr. Cagnetta.
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Daniels. Okay, now we've got that out of the way, now, Mr. Chairman-elect, uh, do you want to take over the meeting right now? I'm very willing to do that, or I will finish this meeting today and you can take over next meeting, which would you rather?
If, if you could finish this one, I, I would appreciate it, um, I will, I will take notes.
Fine, okay, then I shall do so, all right? Amy, is that okay?
That's, that's definitely okay.
That's okay. All right, then let's start, got that out of the way. All right, continuation of the petition to Charles Walsh, three stone post way Greenville, Rhode Island, oh-two-eight-two-eight, for a special use permanent dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a new single-family dwelling, a special use permit is required because the proposed OWTS is proposed to be located within a hundred fifty feet of a wetland. A favorable advisory opinion was obtained by the South Kingston Conservation Commission on March tw- third, twenty twenty. The dwelling will be located twenty-five feet from the front property line. The required front yard setback is forty feet. Relief of fifteen feet is requested. Lot size is point-five-seven acres. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section four oh-one dimensional regulations, and a special use permit is required for zoning ordinance, section five oh-four-point-one, special use permit location of OWTS and section nine oh-seven standards of relief. Owner of the property is Louise Marie Walsh, living trust for premises located on Rosebrier Avenue. Assessors map ninety dash four lot two-one-five and is owned R thirty, okay? Okay, again, before we start, please, uh, just to go over this again, the voting members on this petition will be Robert Cagnetta, okay, John Bernardo, Richard Jurzak, Thomas Daniels, and William Rosen, because William Mark, okay, uh, a regular member, was not here last week for the evidence that was, that was, uh, submitted, okay? Okay, uh, let me see, is Mr. Kenyon, you're here, Mr. Kenyon, okay? I guess we're opening this up again, so while we're continuing, so, uh, uh, you gave us a whole bunch of testimony last week, I remember, do you wanna add anything?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations to Mr. Cagnetta and Mr. Daniels. Um, a- as the, the chairman stated, we made our presentation last month, we provided testimony from the applicant, Josh Rosen, and our engineer, uh, was our engineer and Ed Pimental, our planning and zoning expert. Uh, Mr. Rosen testified, uh, that the proposed OWTS met all the development standards under section five oh-four of the zoning ordinance, and that the granting, uh, and, uh, the requirements for a special use permit. Mr. Pimental testified that the proposed house was in conformance with the town's comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. He prepared a neighborhood analysis and the proposed house was compatible with the surrounding properties. Uh, it was his opinion that the hardship from a denial to requested relief would not only amount to more than a mere inconvenience, it would be a loss of all beneficial use of the property. Um, we answered questions from the board and the neighbors, and several of the neighbors were given a chance to speak. Uh, we had completed our presentation and the board continued the application to give the neighbors an opportunity to retain a lawyer. Uh, I'm not sure if that's happened, but I have not been contacted by anyone. Uh, the neighbors did submit a couple of letters with proposed conditions, and I would like a chance to respond to them, I don't know if you want me to do that now?
Uh, yeah, now, all of those letters have been submitted, uh, just to all the board members, right?
Yes, they have.
Okay, so all the board members have the letters, and if, if I recall, uh, was it just one new letter, Jessica, and it was just copies of all the old letters?
Uh, no, I believe it was two new letters.
Okay, all right, and board members, you all got those letters, uh, I'm, they're, they're quite lengthy, I'm not gonna read them into the record, so, uh, uh, yeah, why don't you do this, Mr. Kenyon, go, go ahead, Amy, you have a question?
Yeah, this is Amy. Uh, I would suggest we ask the, um, objectors and other interested parties on the line to confirm whether there's an attorney on the line waiting to speak. If there is, you know, the applicant made their presentation, we heard from some objectors, um, last month. I, I suggest we, we hear from everyone on the other side who wants to be heard, including any attorneys who may be on the line, and then let, give John the opportunity to respond.
Okay, that's fine, let's do it that way, John, okay? Uh, okay, Jesse, I'm gonna ask now, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Uh, Jess, tell us again how to do that.
So if you're calling in by phone, it's star nine, we'll raise your hand, and then star six will mute and unmute you. And then if you're on your computer, there's a little icon when you hover over your name, if it says, um, uh, raise hand, and then you just click that, and then if we see your hand raised, we will call you.
Okay, first, I'm gonna ask you, are there any attorneys in the audience who, who are, uh, here today who are speaking on this petition?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, all right, is there anyone? Amy, again, you look concerned.
Okay, Mr. Hess just raised his hand, so I will, um, allow him to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hess. Uh, first off, can you, can you spell your name for us, sir?
He needs to unmute.
Uh, sir, unmute.
H E S S.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth, as hell you got?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Uh, the required OWTS information, all the information, I believe it's not been provided by the engineer, uh, be regarding the abutters, uh, leaching field is not shown, which is in the front yard of the, uh, of one-two-five Rosebrier.
Okay, where is one-two-five Rosebrier, was that to the right or?
It would be as you're facing the property, it's directly to your right.
Okay.
In the butter. It's within ten feet of the proposed structure.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Yes, uh, the applicant, I think, is, is showing hardship and, uh, would believe that the applicant is, uh, is going to be required to actually, uh, build out the proposed structure and not, uh, continue to make it available for sale, uh, as it has been in the past. And it would hope that at least for the next, uh, say, three years, that that would, uh, be the case, and that the, uh, variance should have a, a life on it as if he does not proceed immediately. Uh, also, uh, I believe due to the water conditions, uh, everybody's aware of, uh, that a buried reinforced concrete retention wall should be installed uh, along the entire frontage on Rosebrier Avenue side of the parcel, and it's located just inside the property line and along the abutters at one-twenty-five Rosebrier Avenue. And, uh, in order to contain the new system, uh, the abutters, uh, rest of his syst- or her system is in the backyard. Uh, so that's a probably a hundred feet of wall on the, uh, in between the two properties. Uh, this is not an unusual request. This type of concrete wall was required on other Rosebrier Avenue installations that were, uh, that have been, that were actually drier than this one. Uh, to proceed with another item, uh, bottomless OWTS filter structure, which is probably gonna be three to four feet high, it's gonna be very close to, uh, the turnabout on the cul-de-sac. Uh, we feel, neighbors feel that this should be constructed not of the usual timber, but of reinforced concrete walls to protect it against damage from the, uh, garbage trucks and, uh, snowplows and, um, and anybody else. This street, there's a lot of large trucks have to turn around at the end, north end of Rosebrier, and should also have, um, ten-inch, uh, steel pipes, bollards, to also give additional protection. Uh, realizing that this, the, this, uh, system is gonna be, uh, very close to the road. And, uh, furthermore, uh, any building permits that will be needed issued by the town of South Kingston uh, should be withheld until, uh, uh, the existing stormwater drainage and groundwater issues that have, uh, existed for, uh, twenty years probably in front of lot two fifteen, uh, in this north section of Rosebrier Avenue should be corrected by the South Kingston Street Department. And at this time, I believe the record is that they are not willing to do that, uh, that there is no place for the water to drain. Respectfully submitted, uh, thank you, board members and chairman.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
John Bernardo wants to know what happened to the lawyer that you were gonna hire?
He was hired, he reviewed the, uh, latest town, uh, regulation at, uh, uh, at the hundred-and-fifty-feet of foot, uh, wetlands. Uh, town reversed their position from their position of, uh, probably ten years before, and, uh, it does not, uh, seem too interested in protecting our wetlands. And so consequently, uh, we didn't go any further with it because we believe that the, uh, the, uh, engineering, uh, for the most part is, is, uh, should be substantial and, and acceptable. And, uh, the most of it is to determine what is actually the wetlands and the edge of same. So at that point, uh, the attorney was not needed, and we didn't feel that we would, uh, use an engineer.
So no attorney and no engineer, okay, fine, I understand.
Uh, the attorney was paid, he did put in, uh, about four hours of work.
Okay, other board members' questions?
Uh, I have a question, uh, I guess I'm, um, I'm trying to figure, are the, are these requests that are beyond what is regulated by like DEM and our own town official? Is it a request or, I'm not understanding it exactly? Like a hundred, a hundred-foot wall, ten-inch steel pipes, is this beyond the standard engineering that's required by DEM that you're requesting?
Uh, DEM would not, uh, probably be involved with that, uh, portion of it. It would be, uh, within the town.
So, so this is beyond what's required by the town of South Kingston presently?
No, I, it, uh, the, uh, particular, uh, buried reinforced concrete retention wall was required on other properties on Rosebrier.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? Mr. Rosen, do you have a question?
Yes, I did, could you hear me?
Yeah, I can see it too.
Uh, I was just wondering, does the petitioner, uh, or has the petitioner, uh, recommended that the leaching field be on another person's property or another property? That would, I, I'm directing that to Mr. Rosen, the en- engineer, I guess.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what the question, first up, Mr. Rosen's not here, is he?
He is present.
So, I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay, well, uh, Mr. Rosen, would you, uh, would you identify yourself, please? Just give us your...
Yep, Josh Rosen, uh, project engineer, on behalf of the applicant from Principia Engineering, office at twenty-seven Secana Ridge Drive in Turin.
Okay, you're, you're still sworn in, Mr. Rosen, from last week, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, so is the question about, uh, entertaining, uh, a location off this particular property to, to service the onsite wastewater treatment system? Was that the question from you, Mr. Rosen?
It was, it, it was mentioned by Mr. Hess that the leaching field is off of the property, uh, on an abutters property. I was just wondering if that is t- correct or not?
No, the, the proposed leach field, the way it's been approved and identified on the site plans is, is on the subject property owned, um, you know, by the applicant and owner here in the northwest corner of the property.
Let me correct that, uh, please.
Who, who, who?
I did not make that statement that the, uh, leaching field was not on the applicant's property. It is on the applicant's property, but it is at the other end. Apparently, some of the data that was used by, uh, some of the agencies was the south end data, but the actual bottomless filter is at the north end, and it's very close to the street. If I were to guess, uh, it, it's within, uh, uh, probably twelve to fifteen feet.
Did I ask your, answer your question, Mr. Rosen?
Well, I guess I misunderstood, so yes, it answers my question.
Okay, all right, any other questions for this witness? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hess.
Excuse me, I have a, I have a follow-up for, uh, Mr. Rosen, as long as he's, he's present on the site plan, just some clarification, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Tell me the distance between the bottomless sand filter and the edge of the roadway.
Uh, the distance is a, is approximately thirteen feet from the edge of the roadway.
All right.
So the front corner, um, of the, the nearest corner of that bottomless sand filter is a minimum of ten feet from the property line, that's the requisite distance, uh, based on
roadway.
OWTS rules from the property line.
From, I'm asking about the roadway.
Thirteen feet, ten feet from the property line, thirteen feet from the roadway. The point is, the distances have been met, we, we had, did not have to obtain a variance from DEM, uh, because we are, uh, far enough from the front property line.
Well, the reason I ask, and I'll ask, ask for your comment, is that the, uh, ordinance requires section, uh, five oh-four-four J for the leach field, in this case, the sand filter, to be fifteen feet from storm, stormwater runoff. Uh, we have photos on file from the objectors, uh, that show that the runoff is at the edge of the roadway. So I wonder how you, how you comply with the ordinance in that situation?
So, the runoff in that particular location of the sand filter, um, is not standing on the surface of, of Rosebrier. The runoff is standing at the two drywells at the throat of the cul-de-sac, which is about fifty feet away from the sand filter. So the normal drainage pattern is, is upheld at the northerly end of Rosebrier, at the terminus where the cul-de-sac is, the water, uh, flows away from the sand filter. And, uh, any water ponding happens at the two drywells, like I said, uh, to the south of the sand filter, pro-
To the south of the sand filter, approximately fifty feet away.
Okay, can you confirm for me the distance between the sand filter and the wetland edge? It's unclear in the site plan.
Both of the nearest corners are delineated on the site plan, twenty point four feet and twenty point six feet to the wetland edge. The east, those, that's the easterly edge of the BASF, the sand filter.
You're twenty feet from the fifty foot perimeter, correct? You're inside the fifty, you're inside the fifty foot perimeter.
Correct. Twenty, twenty point four feet and twenty point six feet to the wetland edge.
All right. And can you confirm for me that the site plan that I'm looking at shows? The, excuse me, the. Fifteen hundred gallon two compartment septic tank is within the wetland.
It's not within the wetland, no.
Site plan I'm looking at, maybe perhaps you can bring that up. There was a revised site plan. I'm aware of that. This may not be the revised site plan. It's showing me, it's showing me that a corner of the tank is within the wetland.
One of the tank is within the fifty foot perimeter wetland.
That's correct. So it's inside the fifty foot.
Correct.
Restriction.
Correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions for, I think we still have Mr. Hess here? Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Kegneta.
This is Rob Kegneta. I guess I, I have a question for Mr. Rosen. Related to Mr. Hess's inquiry. So. The design of, of the site is to contain all of the rainwater it creates? Or, if I help you understand, are they? Is the use of this site, change of this site going to contribute to more flooding in front of?
That's a good question. That's a good question. I think we talked about it at the end of our conversation at the last meeting. So. It might have been a little bit briefer than, than it could have been. So the, the. Situation on this particular property is pretty simple. The runoff currently today. Flows from the westerly limits of the property, right at the front. Toward the wetland. There's an effective berm in the front of that property where the water currently today doesn't leave the property and contribute. To the problem on Rosebrier Avenue. So during the course of this design, as it went back and forth with DEM, they were pretty sensitive to the issues. They. They received this similar correspondence that you folks have from the same abutters. Relative to the issues in the street and the stormwater runoff. So we had to do a handful of things throughout this process to ensure. That our site design promoted the natural historical drainage patterns on this site. And effectively what we have here is the same elevations at the front and the street line. And any of the elevations that we've created for the house development and for the septic. Allow the water to run toward the wetland the way it does today. We've mitigated some of that water. With a proposed rain garden for the roof. And we've shedded the water away from the onsite wastewater treatment system. The, the bottomless sand filter based on the site grading. We've also shedded that water around the proposed structure. Toward the wetland as a result of the proposed grading. So we've been able to. Deal with the stormwater runoff, the drainage patterns that you see out there today as far as this particular property. Will be the same when the, when the house site is developed. The issue in the street will be likely a similar issue than it is today. Than it is, as it is today. After this is developed. We're not suggesting that we're going to make it any better. And, but we're certainly not going to exacerbate that situation with this development.
So are you talking about the water coming in between sort of the. Proposed onsite wastewater and the house, pretty much?
Correct.
At the low point land?
In between the sand filter and the rain garden.
Yeah.
And around the side of the, the proposed structure toward the well. And it generally flows on a west to east direction right now, based on the grades. And that's, that's going to be the same situation after the site's built out.
Oh, so west to east. So from their backyard to their front yard is how the water is running now?
No, from Rosebrier, Rosebrier's west, the wetlands east in the backyard.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
That's okay.
Wrong direction. Okay, so it, not that it's going to make it worse per se, but your intent and, and the, the design of this and DEM's. Request is that, that you do not contribute to running off, any runoff to adjacent properties or the road.
Correct. And I just show the board, I, I know you're familiar with the process. We, we still have one more step. If this board were to approve this special use permit. This application does also need to be reviewed by Coastal Resource Management. Based on the wetlands itself. That's the last step. So that site plan. And the grading and those impacts or, or mitigating those impacts would also be reviewed by that agency. That's still an additional step we need to take once we get through this process.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, does any, you know, since we do have Mr. Rosen speaking, does any, any other board member have any other question of Mr. Rosen? Okay, all right. Mr. Hess is, is done, I believe. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, Bill Riley has his hand raised, but before that, I just want to advise someone. Jim Leonis is asking questions on the question and answer format. And if he could raise his hand to speak. That way the questions can be heard by everyone. So I'm going to not answer his questions and request him to raise his hand. And I'll put Mr. Riley on now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Riley. Will you spell your, please spell your name, please?
William, W I L L I A M, Riley, R I L E Y.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I've written as of yesterday, a letter with four inconsistencies. And I'd like to share an opinion. And the opinion is that the town of South Kingston is taxing the lot as a buildable lot. And yet the town is preventing the building on the lot. And I'd like to offer two possible solutions. Solution one is that you fix the road. Alfred Kernow, who was the highway superintendent, had a solution. Which was vetoed by my next door neighbor. Who has since passed away. His wife has sold the house and the closing is at the end of this month. Solution number two would be that the zoning board of review and the conservation commission. Develop a solution which doesn't place the proposed dwelling in the street. And yet allows the conservation commission. To move the dwelling forward a little bit. And create added distance to the wetland. And if you go back and forth a little bit, I'm sure a satisfactory iteration can be accomplished. In relation to my inconsistency, number four. I want to mention that at five fifteen this afternoon. I talked to the realtor who has this property onto contract to sell it. He indicated that yes, it will be back on the market as soon as this inconsistency is fixed. His name is Scott Hallberg and his phone number is four oh one. Seven eight three nine six one one. He's with Randall Realty. When he initially listed this property many years ago, he was on his own and since he's gone, since gone with Randall Realty. And I'd be very glad to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for this gentleman? Board members?
John Bernardo, Mr. Riley. Unless I misurge you, you, you seem to have stated that. The build, proposed building is. Quote, in the street. Is that what you said?
It's, it's closer to the street than say mine is. Mine is fifty feet. And they want to go twenty-five feet.
All right, well, you can see the trouble about a statement like that. So. I understand then that you're, you're revising that statement then. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for this witness? Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Jim Leoness, I'm going to allow him.
Okay. Mr. Leoness, are you there?
I am.
Okay, we.
I have one question for.
Please, wait, 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 wait. Please spell your name, sir.
Oh, sorry. Jim Liness, L Y N E S S.
Okay, sir, do you tell, swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
So one is a, just a question for information. What is the square footage of the dwelling that's being proposed to be built on the site? And the second is also a question of, did I hear correctly? That part of the OWTS is in fact within the fifty foot boundary of the wetlands.
Okay, is that, is that it for questions, sir?
That's it.
Okay, okay. You know, I, I guess what I'll do is I'll just, Mr. Kenyon, answer those questions if you could.
I will. So the. House is a proposed two bedroom house with a seven hundred and thirty-eight. Square foot footprint with a ten foot by twelve foot attached deck to the north side of the house. The, the OWTS is within the fifty feet of the, the wetland. The town's requirement is a hundred and fifty feet. DEM normally requires fifty feet. In this case, relief was obtained from that.
Okay. All right, does any other board member have any question of Mr. Leoness? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition?
Bert Hess has raised his hand again.
Okay, Mr. Hess, you're still under oath. Go ahead.
A question on the size of the house that Attorney Kenyon has just mentioned. Is there a second floor or even a third? And would the second floor have extensions or bump outs which would bring. The structure even closer to the street?
Hey, do you know that, Mr. Kenyon?
I, I know that there is a second floor and I'm not sure about the bump outs. I, I don't know how. The building official handles that. If you obtain relief, if you can have a bump out that. Brings the second floor closer or not.
Mr. Pimentel, what do you say on that?
The bump outs would count towards going beyond the envelope of that, that first floor footprint. So. If the relief is given for that seven hundred. Fifty-eight square feet, that's what it would be limited to on the second floor as well.
Okay, Mr. Hess?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? All right, no one else?
No one else.
Okay, fine. Okay, John, I'm going to give you the last word to respond, please. Mr. Kenyon?
Sure. Once again, I'd like to thank the board. We appreciate the neighbors' comments and letters and requests. We've done everything we can to reduce the impact of this. Application. In fact, when we went before the conservation commission. They had requested a couple of conditions which we complied with and then they gave a positive recommendation. One of those was to come to this board and request the front yard variance. As far as the neighbors requested conditions, I think Josh has responded to the engineering ones. There were a couple. The one of them is that they not be able to sell the property. As the board knows that, that, that's an invalid condition that the board. Deals with use and not really ownership of the property. And the next one was that the applicant not be able to begin construction until the town. Addresses the issues in the road. And I, I appreciate the mention of Al Kernow. I haven't heard his name in a while. But, and would love for the town to fix that problem, but. I don't think a condition that my applicant has no. Ability to address or is out of his control should be made a part of the decision tonight. So, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right. Anything else? Nothing else, John, Mr. Kenyon?
That's it.
Okay, all right, having that in mind, okay. Board members, okay, why don't we openly discuss this, okay? Mr. Bernardo, what do you think?
I'm inclined to vote, I'm inclined to vote in favor of the petition. I. I'm aware that Josh Rosen, both Josh Rosen and Ed Pimentel. Were sworn in as experts. And I take them at their designations. And. I believe the statement that Mr. Rosen. Indicated to me or to the board. About concerning the fact that in his opinion, the building. And the, the. OWTS will not contribute to the water in the street. So that was important for me to hear. And there is a problem with water in the street. That doesn't mean somebody can't build. That's a problem for the street, excuse me, for the town to address at some time. But it shouldn't affect the applicant's right to improve his property. Whether he's going to live in it or sell it is irrelevant to, to me. So. I'm inclined for that reason. And I, I do think the property is constrained. So. I'm okay with. The relief that they're requesting.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Kegneta. How do you feel?
I think I, I certainly understand the concerns of the neighbors. I mean, it, it seems like the whole area suffers from. Sort of encroachment onto the wetland that has changed, not just changed, but it's directed water in ways both unpredictable and unplanned. I think, you know. The way buildings were built and the way they're required to be built now are, are two different things. The onsite wastewater treatment systems are far, far surpass anything that's been built even in the past twenty-five years. The requirements of, of stormwater and, and allowing stormwater to go offsite is certainly changed. Even in the past ten years. So the, the days of sort of building without regard to effect. Don't exist. And, and the, the process in which the applicant has gone through. In terms of the DEM as well as the conservation commit, commission sort of proves that. This is not sort of someone with a backhoe just moving some dirt around and hoping for the best. This is a, a well thought plan. And, and design plan by professionals, by the engineer. Which has to be built to this spec. It's not even a question of it, maybe-ish. There's no-ish in this. This is. You know, the, 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 both the elevations as well as. The way the drainage is going to function have to be done to spec and it's up to our, our inspector to, you know, as well as the professionals on site. To, to verify the fact that it was built this way. So I think based on the confidence of the conservation commission. As well as the, the DEM's review. I feel that, that all of the, the appropriate. You know. Organizations have, have sort of looked at this plan and, and gave it sort of their, their approval. So I think for us, it's really saying, well, were these particular issues resolved in its planning and development? For us to approve it. And I, I do believe that, that they've, you know, showed their burden. Of the, of the site as well as come up with a reasonable solution. So, I mean, it's, it's my, I would, I would approve it based on the submittal here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. William Rosen, okay, what do you think?
Well, I agree with my two calls.
Well, I agree with my two colleagues and their pre- previous presentation. I was particularly convinced by the fact that the, uh, Conservation Commission uh, requested and it was complied with that they moved the, uh, OWTS forward, uh, twenty feet closer to the, closer to the road, thus necessitating the, the variance that we're considering. And, um, I'm also persuaded by the, uh, uh, evidence or information that's given by, uh, Mr. Rosen about the fact that the, uh, water that runs from the OWTS through the, uh, leaching field, goes to the, uh, wetlands and not into the road, uh, because of the berm that's there, so. I am inclined to vote with, uh, my two colleagues that preceded me.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, how do you feel, sir?
I'm always concerned about any incursion into wetlands. Uh, our ordinance is a hundred and fifty feet, DEM is fifty. Uh, these structures are within the fifty feet that DEM requires. And that's a deep concern. However, I respect the, uh, previous comments of my colleagues, and I, uh, do not intend to deny.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Amy, uh, is it appropriate for me to ask Mr. Mark his comments? I know he wasn't here for the first, uh.
He, he can certainly comment.
Okay, Mr. Mark, I don't want to leave you out.
Uh, no, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Okay, all right, uh, you're fine with it, okay, that's good.
My colleague's input.
Okay, all right, uh, I would tend to agree with everything everyone said. Uh, I don't think it's, I need to, uh, waste everyone's time. I, I agree with every remark that was made by, uh, every, all the other board members, okay? And I would, uh, I would vote in favor of the petition as well, okay? Having that in mind, okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay, Mr. Cagnetta, go ahead.
Um, is going to, or should I just give it, um, the, the, my shot, and then if, if you feel that I should fill in anything, we can do that?
Sure thing.
Um, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of, uh, Charles Walsh of Three Stone Way in Greenfield, Rhode Island. Uh, this is for a special use permit and a dimensional variance. Um, they were seeking to construct a, uh, single-family dwelling, uh, close to a, uh, uh, wetland as well as, uh, a front yard setback, uh, relief. Um, we had, uh, the attorney, um, Mr. Kenyon present the, uh, information of the plans as well as, uh, the, the, uh, various, uh, Conservation Commission approvals, um, and recommendations. Uh, the, the applicant also presented, uh, Mr. Rosen, the engineer, who spoke of, uh, the conditions of the site as well as the proposed use. Uh, this is an R thirty zone. Um, and, uh, the, uh, house is proposed as, uh, seven hundred and sixty-six square feet. It's a two-bedroom. Uh, the, uh, Mr. Rosen spoke of the permeability factors will be improved, uh, which is, uh, what we talked about in terms of improving the, uh, runoff from the site and actually containing that within various, uh, uh, natural runoff, uh, to the wetlands as well as, uh, the rain garden on site. Um, they moved the, uh, house and the septic as far as, far away as, uh, they could, um, with the recommendations of, uh, DEM. Uh, the Conservation Commission did have concerns, um, about areas of disturbance. Um, but they were, uh, with the proposed plan, the site plan, um, the limits of disturbance, um, are, are, are clearly recognized and limited, uh, relative to the site. We're only, they're only disturbing about a third of the site. And, um, Mr. Pimentel, uh, the consulting company, uh, had, uh, talked about how, uh, this building would not be out of character for the area. The, uh, the objectors, uh, there were several, um, Mr. Hess, Mr. Font, and Mr. Fontaine, Mr. Riley, uh, and Mr. Leoness, uh, all spoke of concerns of drainage in the area, which, uh, mostly was, uh, within the street. They were concerned also of the, uh, location of the wetland and is the building, um, or is the lot buildable? Um, and by the, uh, presentation of the engineer to, uh, describe how they were going to limit disturbance as well as, uh, the, the impact of the footprint of the building as, and the, uh, septic system, um, made me, uh, uh, convinced that they were, um, remediating sort of any uh, runoff that was coming off the property. Uh, also, we have, um, sort of the DEM, uh, recommending the placement of the septic and the Conservation Commission, um, uh, recommending, uh, uh, the, the runoff be directed to the, the, the wetlands. Um, so, understanding sort of their concerns of the, of the objectors, it seems like that they were, uh, certainly addressed, uh, within the design of the system as well as the, uh, placement of the building on the property. Um, and since we're talking about, uh, a special use, um, and a, uh, dimensional, uh, variance, um, I'll start with the, uh, special use. Uh, the special use is related to the, uh, septic, uh, system or the, the onsite wastewater treatment plan. We find that the, uh, special use is authorized by our ordinance. Um, and this is, um, making sure that the placement of the system, uh, will not harm, uh, the wetlands and, and it allows us, uh, to give, uh, that special use permit relative to, um, the satisfying, uh, the concerns of, of its placement. Uh, we find that it does meet the criteria set forth in this subsection of our ordinance. Um, and, uh, this is because, um, they have gone through the, uh, various, uh, steps of, uh, DEM as well as the Conservation Commission. Um, we find that granting this special use will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance. And, uh, uh, or the comprehensive of the, the plan of the town. We, um, have considered, um, whether or not the satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made um, or will be made, uh, and are, uh, not limited to the following matters, um, how the property is accessed. Uh, and, um, any pedestrian safety or convenience. Uh, we, there was really no change within the property to, uh, affect any of those things. Um, off-street parking and loading areas were required, those are not, um, uh, relevant here. Uh, trash storage and delivery isn't relevant. Um, utilities, uh, in reference to locations, availability, um, utility of the, uh, waters and, uh, uh, electric or gas isn't a, a consideration here. Um, the septic system and the drain, and the, uh, is, is included, and we find that this is the best location uh, for the property, um, as recommended by DEM and the Conservation Commission. Uh, screening and buffering, um, there, uh, it's identified on the plan, uh, to have screening, but it's not required, um, and there are no signs, um, or any other open space. Um, there are no conditions in which this, uh, uh, is, is, is put on this, uh, for the approval. We do have the, uh, ex, uh, applicant's exhibit of the, um, site plan as well as, uh, the proposed septic area. And as for the dimensional variance, uh, we have, um, the placement of the building is within, uh, twenty-five feet. Um, and they're actually going to be, uh, ten feet, oh, I'm sorry. The, the building has to be forty feet setback, and, uh, they're going twenty-five feet, so they're asking for fifteen feet. Um, this was all in response to the, uh, balance of, uh, the requirements or requests of the DEM to move the building forward, which did put the building, uh, into this, um, requirement for the dimensional variance. The, uh, same information in terms of the, uh, objectors and the, um, uh, data provided for this. We find that the hardship the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the land. Um, and it's, uh, not due, uh, to, to the general, uh, characteristics of the surrounding area. Or I'm sorry, it is due to the, the characteristics. Um, this is not due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. Um, this lot, um, and this area is very unique. There's only a certain amount of lands on this property that, that can be built upon, um, safely to the environment as, as it was proposed, uh, uh, by these plans, um, site plan. Um, this is sort of the best placement of the house, uh, in, in, within that, uh, fifteen or twenty-five feet. We find that the hardship is not a result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result in the, uh, primarily, um, of the applicant's desire to realize a greater financial gain. Um, because they're not asking for anything bigger than is allowed. It's a matter of just, uh, placing it in a location that is, uh, better for the environment. We find that granting this variance, uh, will not alter the general charac- character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan for which this ordinance is based. Um, the, uh, house, uh, the house's setback, um, is, uh, sort of unique to the property, um, itself, um, but it's not necessarily going to change the area. This is the least relief necessary. And that is, uh, because of the, uh, placement via the, the DEM's re- request. And we find that the hardship that, uh, the owner would suffer, um, if not granted this variance, uh, would me, um, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. Um, and that's, uh, because this, this is feasible, uh, to build a property like this. Um, it has to be thoughtful, um, it has to be well-planned, and it has to be well-executed. Um, and I feel that the, uh, um, all of these, um, are, are satisfied by the applicant. So, uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve.
Yeah, Mr. Cagnetta, would you consider adding, uh, I think there were some conditions with the Conservation Commission. Uh, would you consider adding them to your motion?
I would, uh, include, um, the rec, any recommendation by the Conservation Commission, yes.
Okay, all right, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta, would someone like to second?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, just so there's no confusion, if there is a down the road, so to speak, um, I believe, uh, CRMC has not yet reviewed this, so I wanted to make sure that we, the board, understand that it hasn't been approved by CRMC yet.
Okay, so, A- Amy, would we make that a condition of, of approval?
This is Amy. John, I'm glad you mentioned that, and I wanted, uh, to clarify that as well. So that's not a, couldn't, that's not a condition of approval that you need to state. It, it is required by CRMC laws and regulations. The significance of that is the decision will state that it is a, considered a conditional zoning approval, and it's conditioned upon CRMC approval. And the expiration date will be two years from recording versus the, um, standard one year with the right to extend if, um, if necessary.
Okay, Mr. Cagnetta, is that in your motion, all of that?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, uh, anyone want to second it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Bernardo, okay, any discussion? All right, there's no discussion, let's vote. Okay, Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Rick?
Yeah.
This is Amy, before we go on, and Jess, I'm sorry if you said this, um, and I, I missed it, but I want to make sure that the participants on this meeting know that the question and the answer function is just supposed to be used for technical issues, like I can't hear someone or I, I was disconnected. It's not supposed to be used for substantive, uh, comments, and the reason being is that this meeting, this Zoom meeting is being recorded. We don't have a stenographer, but the recording of the meeting is the official record that we don't have the ability to preserve, um, commentary submitted via the question and answer function, and I, I believe that other participants can't see it. So the way to be heard and be recognized is just to raise your hand, and Jess reiterated, um, h- how to do that. Um, everyone will be heard. I, I want to make sure we don't have more people utilizing that, uh, feature for that reason.
Okay, Jessica, there was no, other than that one person, there was no one who did that, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I don't, Amy, I don't think she has to say, because you just said it, so I think we're okay.
Great.
Okay, uh, listen, uh, Mr. Bernardo, I know you had a prior, uh, uh, obligation. Do you want to beg out now, or you're welcome to stay, whatever you'd rather?
Uh, I'm going to thank you for the com- accommodation for tonight, and, um, I would like to leave at this point, if that's all right, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we're, we're okay, so, uh, uh, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, at this point, yeah, who was that?
We're, it's Jessica, before, uh, Mr. Bernardo leaves, would he be available for next week in the event that we have to carry petitions over tonight?
Yeah, but, uh, remember, I won't be available to vote on them.
Right, but any petition that hasn't been heard, in the event, you, you'd be, you'd be there, okay?
But, I, right, what's that, the, um?
The twenty-second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I approve the minute.
Okay.
Friday meeting.
Okay.
Good night.
That's good, John.
Good night.
All right, now, at this point for, uh, since Mr. Bernardo is gone, okay? Uh, Mr. William Rosen, the alternate one, will be voting, okay, as well, all right? For, for all other petitions, uh. Okay, oh, one last, before we move on, uh, i- i- it is now eight o'clock, okay? In, in past with Zoom meetings, we, the agreement of the board was that we would take no petitions, we would start no petitions after ten o'clock, okay? Board members, is that still what you'd like to do? Anyone have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, all right, well, that's what we're going to do. We're not going to take any petitions after ten o'clock. Having that in mind, uh, Amy, do you think we should give people the, uh, the choice that we can have their petitions go over right now and they can leave if they take a guess? What do you think?
I think that's a good idea. I think most people know we've got one coming up with, with a lot of expected, uh, participants. Um, so if you are toward the bottom of the agenda, it's quite likely we are not going to be reaching you tonight. I think the thing to do is if you want to, um, ask now, or we can give people the opportunity maybe in an hour, but now would probably be the better time to ask that it be continued to next Wednesday. We s- seem to have a quorum for the twenty-second. Um, so at that time, it could be heard. We even have a fifth Wednesday this month if we need it.
Okay, uh, other board members, we only asked, uh, John, but does, is everybody else available next Wednesday?
Yes.
Everybody is, okay, all right, okay, well, a- a- anyone who is, uh, listening, who has a petition coming up, if in fact you would like to have it go over to next week and then you don't have to stay here, uh, please, uh, tell us now.
So what you would need to do is unmute yourself if you wish to.
Anybody?
Unmute.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, who's that, Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I have, I'm representing John Savistano, who is, uh, the last one on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Uh, and it looks like we're probably not going to get reached, so we'd request that we get continued to next week.
Yeah.
All right, uh, anyone else?
Yes, Harmon Tier.
Yeah, who's that? Who is this now? Which one?
Fifteen.
Oh, Harmon Tier, okay. Yes, you would also like to go over, sir?
Well, I would like to formally withdraw my application for a dimensional variance in order to speak with my neighbors and address their objector correspondence issues, then reapply for a variance.
Okay, I don't think, Amy, what do we do on that? He doesn't, he just withdraws, right?
It's up to him. If he wants to withdraw, he can withdraw. If he wants to hold it in abeyance, he can request a continuance. If it doesn't have to be next week, it could be next month. But if he wants to withdraw, withdraw. Most people like to leave the application in because you got to pay another fee if you you know, if you apply again, but that's up to him. He can he can withdraw and then submit a different application depending on how the conversations go.
That's what I would like to do.
You're gonna, so what are you gonna do? You're gonna withdraw?
Withdraw.
Okay, all right. So you it's withdrawn. We don't have to vote on withdrawals. Okay, so that's withdrawn, okay?
Thank you.
Let's let's just very quickly, would someone make a motion to have Savistino go over till next week?
I'll move the petition of John Savistano, one ninety one Lake Avenue, South Kingston for dimensional variance on the property located at Sessors Map eighty seven dash four. Lot thirty nine, it's owned R twenty, it's at one ninety one Lake Avenue to go over to the twenty second of July.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniels with someone second it?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Rosen. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it goes over until next Wednesday. All right. All right, anyone else? All right, fine, let's move on then. The next petition, continuation of the petition of Daniel J. Cunningham, three nine eight six eight Tower Hill Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to demolish the existing single family dwelling and construct a new sixteen hundred square foot dwelling with a detached twenty four foot by twenty four foot garage. This property is located within the Jerry Brown Farm Association property, the parcel of land that this property is located on is nonconforming and due to the number of residential structures on the same parcel. A special use permit is required for any addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification of nonconforming land. Lot size is seventy acres. Although there are no property lines between dwellings, the distance from the proposed dwelling to the closest adjacent dwelling is eighty three feet. A special use permit is required per zoning ordinance, section two oh three special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification, and nine oh seven standards of relief. Owner of land is Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc., and the owner of the dwelling is Daniel J. Cunningham for premises located at thirty five Fire Lane Two, South Kingston, Rhode Island, Assessors Map eighty two dash one, Lot One Dash One, and is owned R eighty. Okay, who is here for this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's John Kenyon at Ken. I'm attorney for the applicant, Daniel Cunningham.
Okay.
The applicant is the owner of property at thirty five Fire Lane Two. It's part of the Jerry Brown Farm property located on Texas Sessors Plant eighty two dash one, Lot One Dash One. The property is, or the lot is owned by Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc. There are thirty six houses on the lot, which are owned by the shareholders of the association. In nineteen forty six, the Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc. purchased the property. The homeowners are each given a campsite agreement to use a certain area. And they're also receive a bill of sale from the owner of the structure and a share of the stock in the association. In order to rebuild or to construct in addition to a home, all the owners in there must receive approval from the association and a special use permit from this board. In this case, the applicant's home was nineteen fifty. It's eight hundred and forty four square feet of living area, a twenty four square foot porch, and eighteen square foot utility area and a hundred and twenty eight square foot deck. The campsite gives him control for approximately one point three acres. The house that's there is pretty much uninhabitable and needs to be demolished. The applicant is proposing the construction of a new house with a living area, our living area footprint of one thousand five hundred and eighty four square feet. Porches and decks totaling eight hundred and four square feet and a detached garage totaling five hundred and seventy six square feet. He's also replacing the existing septic system with a new OWTS. The proposed construction meets all the setback requirements under the zoning ordinance, so no mental relief is necessary. The lot that's owned by the association is seventy acres in size, and it's in an R eighty zoning district. It actually meets the density requirements for the zoning district, but is considered nonconforming because there's more than one house on a lot. We applied for this special use permit to alter nonconform use. In the past, applications like this one for Jerry Brown Farm and for South Jerry Cove, there have been no limitation on the increase in size of the buildings. However, in this case, the effect of section two oh three of the zoning ordinance has been questioned. And so section two oh three of the zoning ordinance states that the lawful nonconforming use of a building, structure, and or land may be added to, enlarged, expanded, or intensified, provided that such addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification shall not exceed fifty percent in excess of the existing floor area, land, or intensity used for the nonconforming use at the time the use became lawfully nonconforming. In the present case, the use is a single family residence, which is permitted. It's the number of houses on the lot that makes it nonconforming, and that's not being expanded. The former building official, Mr. Brown, did not believe that the fifty percent rule applied that nonconforming use was not being enlarged or expanded. The fifty percent rule would come into effect if the number of houses was being increased. And it doesn't apply to increase in the size of an individual house. Does apply, then we believe that should be based on the percentage increase to all the houses and not just one. So it'd be the combined building coverage as opposed to the individual building coverage. At this time, I'd like to ask that documents that will be referring to be referred to as follows. The site erosion control plan is exhibit one. The house plans exhibit two. The narrative prepared by Jeffrey Campobiano is exhibit three. The approval letter from the Jerry Brown Farm Association is exhibit four. And then my letter to Wayne Pimental dated July seventh, two thousand twenty, be exhibit five. So at this time, I was gonna have Jeff Campobiano, who's the project engineer, go over his professional experience, the existing conditions plan, and what the applicant is proposing. And then I was gonna have the applicant explain how he came up with his house design. So if I could have Jeff's, please.
Hang on one second, John. Amy, at this point, is it appropriate for you to give a just phillieson or do you want to wait with regard to how you you were gonna make some comments on Jordan's arguments with regard to the fifty percent rule?
I think it would be, this is Amy Owens. I think it would be helpful for you to hear my opinion because I think that will will help inform your questions to to the professionals involved. And I want to thank John for submitting the letter because there was a lot of information in there that was was helpful to me. So I I'm not entirely sure we agree on the ultimate conclusion, but here's what I can tell you. I I do think section two oh three dealing with nonconforming expansions of nonconforming uses applies. It's a nonconforming use because as John indicated in the letter, multi-household uses are not permitted in the R eighty zone. Whenever you have a property with with so many dwellings on it as we have here, it's it's not considered conforming unless that multi-household use is permitted in the zone. So it was at one time before the enactment of this zoning ordinance or even a prior zoning ordinance, it was considered conforming. Now it's considered legally nonconforming. And the purpose of two oh, two oh three is to allow nonconforming uses to continue to exist, but and even allow a modest expansion, but put a cap on that. So in my opinion, reading the section, and I'll read it now, so we all are on the same page. Noncon, lawful, nonconforming use of a building, structure, or land may be added to, enlarged, expanded, or intensified, provided that such addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification shall not exceed fifty percent in excess of the existing floor, floor area, land, or intensity used for the nonconforming use at the time the use became lawfully nonconforming. And it goes on, the last sentence is important, too. Additional special use permits may be granted, provided that the cumulative effect is not more than fifty percent. I think the or in that provision is significant because I think the intent was to, you know, let's say a property had ten dwellings on it to begin with, and then became nonconforming. Well, a fifty percent expansion would allow five additional dwellings for a total of fifteen. You couldn't double it. You also couldn't double the number of the the floor area of either an individual building or the total floor area of all the dwellings. And they're they're all considered nonconforming by use because they're all located on the same parcel. So I I think we have to put aside, at least my advice to you is put aside what we've done in the past. I I have no knowledge of, one, the the opinion of the the prior zoning official, who obviously I respect, he worked for town for a long time. I have no knowledge of whether each and every expansion on this property was lawful with permits. I I don't know about that. Sometimes we hear of you know, neighbors complaining, well, why did my neighbor get to get to build, you know, bigger than I'm proposing? And the answer is, well, maybe they didn't pull permits. But I think I I agree with John that a fifty percent expansion should be permitted using nineteen ninety nine numbers as a baseline and nineteen ninety nine being the the year in which section two oh three was enacted. And in response to his question, you know, what exactly is the baseline? It would be floor area. So so that's what I think we have to limit it to. And it is up to the building official. It, I'm sure it's not an easy task. But at some point, there needs to be a review of all the expansions and that's where John has helped you out when he's he's done some of the work for you there with his research of the tax cards. There needs to be a review to to ensure that in permitting all these individual expansions over the years, we haven't hit that cumulative fifty percent number for floor area. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, so so your your feeling is we should look at the cumulative total of all the properties and and with all the expansions to see where we are. And the and the magic number would be that that could never go over fifty percent.
I I think it's both cu, it's it's cumulative, but also it's individual to each dwelling. So in other words, I don't think it would be acceptable. I don't think it would fit the intent or the plain language of section two oh three to allow just one or two dwellings to expand beyond that. Really, it's a hundred and fifty percent threshold. Even if the other dwellings didn't, because again, the the intent of this is to allow nonconforming uses to continue to exist and expand in a modest way and modest being defined as a hundred and fifty percent expansion or, you know, permitting a fifty percent expansion. I don't think, you know, hypothetically, again, if if just one house wanted to triple its size, I don't think that would be permitted. I think you have to look at it individually and cumulatively. I don't think we're prepared on our end, unless Wayne knows something. I don't, I don't know how much Wayne has looked into this. You know, all those numbers, that's that's a lot to review. But I think the only way we can be guided by tonight is what is a fifty percent expansion of this dwelling alone.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions for Amy on what you just said?
So it, would that be equitable if if you're doing it accumulatively? Then it wouldn't more so be like first come, first served. So the people that got the expansion that met the fifty percent cumulatively would kind of soak up the the usage, more or less.
You know, equi, it's 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 interesting you mention the word equity because it doesn't come into play with the zoning board really at all. Unfortunately, it's just based on, as Rick starts the meeting out, you know, you are a board of limited and defined jurisdiction. Equity, meaning fairness, is not really a consideration, but the answer is yes, if if all the people, you know, if if first in, first out, whoever gets to expand initially, and then the property gets to that cumulative fifty percent threshold, that's it.
And otherwise, you're saying it, Wayne, more or less, you don't have to create a review process to really update the numbers of what that fifty percent is is every so many years, if that's the case, to.
Yeah, th- this is a very particular issue with the properties in town with multiple dwellings on one lot. It it is much, much easier to administer this provision with regard to, you know, non, the the typical nonconforming use that you would think of, right? A restaurant located in a zone in which restaurants are are nonconforming uses, something like that. That's that's the easy one. And I will say planning is aware that of of these issues and we're hopeful to work on a solution at some point. I I don't have a solution now. The ordinance is what it is now.
Okay.
So if if I may, Mr. Chairman, based on the comments of our legal counsel, then is it fair to say that the the application without even testimony fails on its on its face?
Amy, what do you feel about that?
Because it asked for fifty percent increase.
Think what you can do is you can ask to hear from Attorney Kenyon at this point and anyone else he has to testify with him. You know, we we've seen plenty of cases before where the board will grant relief to a lesser quantum than is asked for in the application. I think you should give them the option of modifying the application or simply, you know, asking if it can be designed, i- if the applicant is willing to go forward under those restrictions. You know, they may have a legal argument here that they want to take to a higher level and and that's, you know, it's their right to do so.
Okay, Mr. Kenyon, what do you think? What do you, what would you like to do?
I just, thank you, Amy. I was just looking for clarification on the expansion. Are you saying that it's the 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 living area, the footprint? Or how, what is it based on?
Well, the the language of the ordinance says floor area, the existing floor area, land, or intensity. I think floor area is is the only thing you have to go on, so I don't think footprint comes into it.
So I mean, normally, floor area is considered living floor. So as I, when I started out, I think this has a a first floor area of eight hundred and something square feet. Are they limited to a total floor area, living space of twelve hundred now, or is that per floor?
I'm I'm gonna ask Wayne to to weigh in with his interpretation on that. I'm not sure if the ordinance distinguishes in some places between gross floor area and, you know, living floor area, but I'm gonna ask him to weigh in on that.
Yeah, Amy, I'll have to take a closer look at that because I know there are definitions of the gross living floor area, some of which exclude decks and porches. So until I look further into that, John. So until I look further into that, John, your argument may be that, you know, it's just living space and not other areas of the house.
Um, I, oops, sorry, may be able to help just by reading the definition of floor area from the ordinance. Some of the gross horizontal areas of the several stories and basement of a building measured from the exterior faces of the exterior walls or from the center line of party walls included shall be any interior balconies and metzenines, elevator shaft and enclosed porches. The floor area of accessory buildings on the same lot shall be included. I don't know if that helps, Wayne.
Yeah, it helps a little. I think there's also a definition in the CCL, CCL community council. I think there's a definition in there on gross livable floor area. Amy, if you go to six oh eight four A. And it says in there, and this is specific to gross livable floor area definition that figures not include public porches, unenclosed, opening a porch, exterior stairs, ramps or decks. So to me, that's a very much more specific definition to what we're talking about than the other one, which I think is more of a commercial.
And we are not within this over the coastal community overlay district, correct?
We are not in there, but as far as the definition that represents, you know, the GLFA, which is not in our definitions per se, because they talk about it as gross leasable floor area and not living floor area. So this is the only one that kind of, I think, represents that definition most closely, even though it's in the section of the ordinance that does contain this one.
John, what do you want to do at this point? If you want to go forward, you want to go back to the drawing board, you want it to go over, what would you like?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is the the one downside of Zoom is I I'm not standing next to my client and can't whisper to him, what do you want to do?
Right.
He's here.
I'm listening.
So yeah, so Dan Cunningham is the applicant.
Let's let's have Mr. Cunningham.
We may want to consider continuing in a week to give us some time to to figure this out, but I'll let Dan speak now.
Yeah, Mr. Cunningham, first spell your name, okay?
Sure, sure. Hi, my name is Daniel Cunningham, D A N I E L, C U N N I N G H A M.
Okay, just for record, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, you know, unfortunately, when you guys, when John was making his initial statement, I was breaking up. I didn't catch it all. But I think what 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 may have transpired, it sounds like it's it's a huge home being built up there. But the floor, the first floor space is fifteen, sixteen hundred, but then it's clipped in. I mean, what it what creates this big number, I guess, it's just it's outdoor deck and it's it's not affecting any anybody. It's just outside the house. It's not a it's the lot itself lends itself to God, it's got to be an acre and a half almost. I don't understand what
Yeah, can I just, Mr. At this point, Mr. Cunningham, I think what Mr. Kenyon is asking is that if you, he can't speak to you because you're right next door, not sitting next to him, which you usually would be. But at this point, he feels that we probably should have this go over one week. Am I correct on that, John?
Yeah, so I I was just saying that now that we have an interpretation on what's allowed, we could sit down and figure out what we can do within that interpretation and then come back next week. Now, Dan, I know you're starting the season. I don't know. I don't know when that starts, if you're available next week.
I'll make myself available. I have to. I've got I've got a lot. I'm 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 deep in this. I'm I'm going forward. Correct.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question just quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if
This is Mr. Mark speaking.
Mr. Mark speaking. If if we're if we're hearing Mr. Kenyon in in going with the you know, the assumption that we're going by the lot, the the cumulative amount of based on the lot. You know, is that is that too much of a stretch to even consider to look at the presentation? Or are we just saying that we don't want to move forward on that assumption that we can look at the cumulative amount?
I I think it's, Bill, this is Amy. I think it's because their application proposes an expansion of more than fifty percent of the floor area of this individual dwelling. And it's my advice to the board, you know, ultimately, the board's the board's job to interpret the ordinance on its own. But my advice is that because both the property as a whole and each individual dwelling on the property is considered a nonconforming use, because there are so many of them on one parcel, I believe a fifty percent cumulative limit applies as well as a limit on expansion of each individual dwelling. So I think they would, because their application is proposing to expand beyond that, I think they need to assess whether they can modify that.
John, why don't why don't we have a go over for a week and give you a little bit of time? I mean, to see what where you are on this. I mean, I don't, unless you want, I mean, obviously, we can't vote on, there's a problem now. That's what I'm saying. So uh
Right, I I agree. I think we'd be better off putting it over a week.
Okay, all right. Will someone make that motion to have it go over one week?
I'll move the continuation of petition, Daniel J. Cunningham for property located thirty-five Fire Lane two, South Kingston, Rhode Island, for a special use permit to go over one week until July twenty-second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Daniels. Will someone second it?
Second, Mr. Mark.
Okay, second by Mr. Mark. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it's over for one week. Okay? All right, let's go on to the next one. Okay, continuation of the petition of Daniel or David Levesque, thirteen. Am I missing anything? Jess, we're okay? Where are you? We're okay, right?
All right, we're good.
Okay, I just remember you're my check on making sure I don't miss anything. It's very difficult when all I see these little pictures in front of me. Okay, continuation of the petition of David Levesque, thirteen ninety-five Atwood Avenue, Johnson, Rhode Island, oh two nine one nine, for a special use permit on the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to establish a restaurant with alcohol, accessory drive-up window and accessory entertainment to a restaurant. All uses require a special use permit. The applicant received a favorable favorable advisory opinion for the development plan from the planning board on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Lot size is point nine one acres. A special use permit is required for zoning ordinance, Section three oh one, Schedule of Use Regulations Table in Section nine oh seven Standards of Relief. Owner of the property is Gerald Richmond for premises located at one five one Old Tower Hill Road, assessors map fifty-seven dash two lot fifty-one in Zone CH Commercial Highway. Use code fifty-six point one, restaurant with alcohol. Use code fifty-six point three, accessory entertainment to restaurant and use code fifty-eight, drive-through accessory window. Okay? Someone here for this?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. This is James Callahan, along with David Levesque. How are you?
Good, sir. Could you just spell your name just for the record, James?
Sure, it's James Callahan, C A L L A G H A N of Callahan and Callahan, three Brown Street in Wicklow.
Terrific. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate your service. I'm here tonight with David Levesque, who's to my right, my left, your right, probably. Dave operates a number of Brood Awakenings in Rhode Island. His South County location is of particular interest today because he's a South County resident. We are presenting a plan to you tonight that we think is an exciting development for the Old Tower Hill Road corridor. Dave's proposing to move his current South County Commons location to the one fifty-one Old Tower Hill site, which is the former Feet First and Zero Wampum area, which has been unfortunately vacant for a number of years. We believe this project will be a great economic generator for the town and will be a boon to the newly redesigned corridor. We're here tonight with three requests for special use permits. Those requests include drive-through accessory use, use code fifty-eight, restaurant with alcohol, use code fifty-six point one, and accessory entertainment to restaurant, use code fifty-six point three. We have a number of experts with us here tonight. I must tell Jessica and the board that I sent out the panelist invite to our respective experts. They are listed as James Callahan, and that's not anything anyone wants to hear is from a bunch of James Callahan. So we have Mr. Robert Quentin from the HB. We'll talk about the traffic. Mr. Mark Butler from a Tunick Designs, talking about the landscape, and Josh Rosen, who should be familiar to everyone from last application or two applications ago from Princeton Engineering. And again, Dave Levesque is with me here tonight. Before we get started, I would like to point out one important change in our proposal since the initial submission. That amendment was submitted earlier this week, and that amendment includes a change in the plans regarding the drive-through exit. Plans included a drive-through exit onto the street that is behind the Tower Hill Road location, which is Narragansett Avenue West. As you probably know from the application, the submitted materials, there were a number of neighbors who voiced opinions and wrote letters and had a petition regarding those plans. In light of the neighbors' concerns, Dave thought about it for a while, and he amended the drive-through exit plan. Instead of exiting onto Narragansett Avenue West, now all drive-through customers, and all customers for that matter, will exit and enter from Old Tower Hill Road. We believe this hopefully will allay some of the neighbors' concerns and will improve the stacking of cars on the site itself. Ran this plan by Wayne Mental and Jay Parker, and Jay Parker did submit a plan, I mean, sorry, a letter saying that we did not have to go back before the planning board or TRC for these changes due to the request making remain the same. In total, we hope this change provides you with a great reason to support the plan and the permit requests and win your approval tonight. I must say that the driving force behind this project is Dave Levesque. This would probably be more effective in person because you realize, I think, I hope, in his testimony, that he's a bit of a force of nature. He's a self-made entrepreneur. He opened his first shop in Johnson in nineteen ninety-six with two employees, his parents. As an example of his drive, when he started this project last year, Dave had five locations. During the pandemic, he's actually opened up another location in Providence, I think in May. He might be one of the only people in the state who's actually opened a business since March. He now employs over a hundred people statewide, and he's dedicated to opening a new project or a new place in South County. He's had this location here in South County Commons since two thousand and three, and he wants to own and operate his own property at one fifty-one Old Tower Hill Road. He has a purchase and sale agreement with the Richmond family, and he would like to move forward the project as soon as possible. So if, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd ask that Mr. Levesque be sworn in. He can give you an overview of the project as well.
Okay, can I just ask one quick question? You had made a comment. Did you say you don't need to go back to the planning board with that change?
We we talked to Mr. Parker and Mr. Mental, and I neglected to submit the letter to you in advance, although Jay did send it to Wayne. So I think Wayne can tell us that he did receive that from Jay.
I also, I'm sorry, I just, I was checking through my emails in a earlier petition, and I noticed the letter from Attorney Callahan. So I did forward it to all the board members just like ten minutes ago. So I don't know if you have access to your email now, but it is in all of your emails.
And this is Amy. My opinion on this is consistent with Mr. Callahan's. When an application that requires advisory development plan review by the planning board, when the development plans are altered after that review is completed, it's my opinion, it does not need to go back to the planning board for another round of advisory development plan review unless the change is so drastic that it essentially transforms it into a into an entirely new project. I don't think it rises to that level. And I think that's, you know, it it's a good thing generally when plans change because that means they're responding to input of the planning board and input of neighbors.
You don't want to go over the watch?
Okay. All right, Mr. Callahan, that answers my question. Go ahead. Why don't we get Mr. Levesque going and give us your name, Mr. Levesque, and spell it, please?
My name is David J. Levesque, D A V I D, J for Joseph, last name L E V E S Q U E.
Okay, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Go ahead.
Well, we've been in the South County location now for about seventeen years. Recently, due to COVID, our South County store has closed earlier than expected. We were supposed to be there until November of this year, but we will no longer open up in the common. So plan now is to move solely and only onto one fifty-one Old Tower Hill Road. We think it's a great location. We're thrilled with all the development and work that's being done on the road. We think it's going to be a real success, not only for us, but I think for the community as well. Like James had mentioned, we did originally want to have the access going out the back. It was the first project. It was the most expensive inexpensive way to do the project when we were doing it without losing a lot of the building and making a lot of changes. But after sitting back, listening to the neighbors' concerns and how upset many of them were on the project with us exit out onto Old Narragansett Road, last Monday, I made the decision to go back to my construction guy and Josh Rosen and actually look and mock Butler to see if we could change this plan around. And fortunately, we were able to be able to reroute the drive-through around the building. We have to take off another eleven feet on the side of Hal's gas station in order to do this. The good parts of this particular project is that all of our stacking in cars now will wrap around the building. It won't even be seen, not even in our own parking lot, never mind in the road. It allows us to have a much larger outside patio area, which we did not have with this project. It also increased the landscaping, which I think everybody be thrilled about, and and Mark will speak about shortly. But we're excited to go over there. We think this could be good for the brewed product, the brewed brand, and for the local neighbors. A couple of the little changes, we did downsize the store a little bit, so it won't be as big, but with the additional outside parking, I mean, outside patio, that kind of offsets that. So we're excited about moving into the town. And open to hear anything anybody has to say, and our team is going to speak on behalf of all of the issues and things that we're doing right now.
Hey, can you just tell us just a little bit about what, I mean, what's the operation going to be like? What's with the liquor permit and what's with the you're asking for entertainment? What what does that mean?
Yep. So Brood Awakenings over the years has evolved. We started out originally just as a coffee shop with muffins and bagels and coffee. And over the years, the the consumers really painted the direction of where we had to go, offering more food, more drinks, drive-throughs, larger stores, things like that. And over the past few years, we developed now six locations, if you count South County, even though that's closed, three of which have full liquor licenses, including the new store we just opened up at one hundred Westminster Street in Providence. The liquor component of our business is anywhere from seven to twelve percent, depending on the store. So it's a very small component, but it adds to the overall picture. If somebody wants to come in and have a sandwich and grab a beer, along with somebody that wants to come in and, you know, have a muffin and a coffee. So it's an additional item, helps us be a little bit more rounded so we can survive and be competitive in the market. The entertainment component, only one location currently has an entertainment license. That's my original store, Johnston, on thirteen ninety-five Atwood Ave. We've expanded that store over the past twenty-four years, five different times. And with the entertainment license there, basically, it's a Thursday or Friday, Saturday night, we can have a little jazz, someone playing a little classical music. There's a night or two, we would do karaoke, little things like that, just to give more There's a night or two we would do karaoke, little things like that, just to give more ambiance to what we do to help us be, once again, a little more rounded, so we can get more revenue out of the facility and the property so that we can be profitable. And these days and times, now more than ever before, you can't just survive as a regular coffee shop unless you're an owner-operator. But once you start to grow and you want to have a bigger place and support more people and have a place that's as large as what ours are, three, four, five, six, or eight thousand square feet, you need added components in order to drive revenue into the facility. So it's a small addition to what we do, but it helps us be a little bit more successful by having the entertainment license. On top of that, basically, right now, the way the laws have changed, basically, since the station nightclub fire piece, which was very sad, you can't physically have someone even come in your store and just sit and play a guitar, even if they're a customer, without having some form of an entertainment license. So even if we just want to have somebody come in and play a little acoustic music, or, you know, a little background piano, you have to have an entertainment license to do that. So there's no big bands, there's no rowdy club. You know, it's a, just another little way of adding some sort of entertainment or a piece of a cool environment to our locations in order to grow. A couple of other things about the liquor piece, just so you know, too, when the governor announced that you could sell or take out liquor in restaurants and any type of bar facility during this whole COVID thing, I want you to know that we refused to do that because we didn't want to have people walking in and out of the building with liquor. So I think we're very, very responsible in how we handle it. Our liquor component has been in business now, Warwick, or I want to say, three years, Johnston, a year and a half. We've had no issues, and it's just a small part of our business, but it helps us be a little more rounded. Hopefully, that answers your question.
All right. Anything else from him, Mr. Callahan?
Not at this time, but he's, okay, any, any, any questions?
Okay, board members, questions for this gentleman?
Questions, Tom Daniels. What, what hours do you anticipate operating at this location?
I think the hours on, on the day and the time of the year could vary a little, but basically, we would probably open up somewhere like we've been doing around five thirty, six o'clock in the morning. That would be seven days a week, probably almost every day out of the year, unless certain holidays, we don't force employees to work. So if they don't want to work, we would close. Could be Christmas or Easter, something like that. Sundays, normally, we close early, could be between four and six PM. I think that's probably going to be consistent at that location. Monday through Wednesday is probably going to be somewhere between seven and nine o'clock that we would close that location. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, it could be a little bit later, it could be ten or eleven, or, you know, as late as maybe, you know, midnight if we had, you know, something going on there, whether it be a little jazz or blues, or, you know, little component with that.
So I guess, I guess I have a question. Maybe Amy can help me on this. An entertainment license, to be granted, what, are there any stipulations on sound or loudness that go along with an entertainment license?
I don't know that the council, I, I can't recall if the council typically issues entertainment licenses. I, I'm going to have to look into that, and maybe during the course of this, uh, this meeting, I can get back to you. You know, I think the control is the special use permit. Um, there are other, you know, in other towns, there are different regulatory schemes. Jim, um, will, will the client, will, will this applicant be going before the council for an entertainment license?
I believe just a liquor license.
Yeah, I, I, thanks. That's my, that's my understanding. So I don't think we, the council will have any direct control over the entertainment aspect of it. I believe it's limited to, um, to, to the discretion of, um, the zoning board. Um, you, of course, can place whatever restrictions you think are advisable. As you know, we do not have a general noise ordinance in town. We do not have a decibel meter. There are, there are commercial standards for noise that apply to, you know, industrial uses. They do not apply to this proposed use.
Well, I, I guess, Mr. Levesque, that's my concern.
Yeah, well, noise is not going to be a problem with what we do. If someone's playing a guitar or singing inside the store, it's, it's all just a, I want to say, medium to low volume. It's not going to be, uh, you know, loud bands or rock clubs or nightclubs. I mean, if you go to our existing store, even on some of our, you know, Facebook pages, you'll see some, you know, Bob Minelli singing. If you've ever been to Capricho's, he's been a, you know, a singer down there forever, and him, his daughter, and his, you know, family be over there singing. It's not going to be anything that anybody would hear from next door. Never mind, you probably barely hear it in our own parking lot. So I don't think you're going to have anything with the noise issue. It's not even, doesn't even.
Right. I, I appreciate that, but as you know, the special use permit goes with the property.
Yep.
So if you were to sell it tomorrow and somebody wants to open a nightclub with a restaurant and entertainment.
Oh, no, sorry. I, I want to, yeah, that's, it would not be, it, it couldn't open as a nightclub. So the special use permit is the, the, we're considering a few different aspects of the special use permit here. So when we get to the point of making a motion, be it tonight or at a later point in time, we're going to have to review each aspect carefully. The, just a minute. The different aspects of the special use permit all relate to the main use, which is a restaurant with alcohol. The, the ancillary aspects that also require a special use permit are the accessory drive-up window and accessory entertainment to a restaurant. So another restaurant could establish or could continue the same use. It certainly could not be converted to a nightclub or any entertainment beyond an accessory level.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is, uh, the liquor license, is, is it a beer and wine or a full liquor license?
It would be a full liquor license.
And you, you testified that you're only open till basically seven to nine weekdays at any evening?
Yeah, that's our proposed hours now. I mean, based on what we do with our current existing stores. You know, could it be a little bit sooner or could it be a little bit later? It could. But even, even at our two existing stores, Bald Hill Road, which is extremely busy, we're not open past eleven or twelve o'clock on any real given night. Johnston, where we have the entertainment license, there could be a night that we're open to midnight or eleven thirty or eleven o'clock if we had something going on, but we're not one of those late-night rowdy crowds. So, yeah, you'd see those are probably about the hours that we'd be running.
So, and, and Tom, as you know, the board, if it wants to, can place our restrictions, you know, as a condition on a special use permit, or you can leave that to the council to do so. If, if you place those restrictions on, then they would need to come back for a renewed special use permit to request relief from those restrictions.
Yes, thank you.
Do you anticipate, Mr. Levesque, that you, did you say you're going to have outside seating? Would there be entertainment outside?
We're not proposing any entertainment outside at all, no.
Okay, but, and, but there, there is contemplated outside seating, right? I mean, is, I know that that's a hot thing right now, obviously, but is that what we're talking, we're talking about some outside tables? What are we talking about?
We will. With the new design now, we're probably going to have somewhere between seven and eight hundred square feet, could be a little bit bigger of outside seating space, which would be, if you're looking at our building, it's on the left-hand side, closest to Hal's gas station.
Okay, all right, all right. So there will be, so what, what do you think, what, what do you see being outside?
Chairs, tables.
Tables, how many? No, how, how many? I know, but what, what do you anticipate here?
Well, that's going to depend on what's, what's happening right now. I mean, right now, you, you have to have tables, you know, six and seven and eight feet apart, depending on how you're servicing them.
Right, of course. I know these are, these are special times, and I mean, once, hopefully, we're all going to have a vaccine here, and this is going to go away. Do, so you don't anticipate any entertainment outside?
No, not really. I mean, I mean, but if someone wanted to sit out there and play a guitar, technically, they couldn't if you didn't have an entertainment license. But no, we do not plan on having outside entertainment. It's, it's all planned for being inside.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that being a restriction if it had to be.
Okay, board members, other questions for this gentleman?
Bill Rosen here. As far as the, uh, drive-up accessory window, is that going to be off the backside?
That drive-up window is going to be, if you're looking at the property, on the left-hand side, also a budding Hal service station. And will be toward the front of the building, and that's the way we wrapped it now. You'll see that from the, the plans that Josh Rosen put together shortly. But yeah, front left side, if you're looking at the building from Old Tower Hill Road.
And originally, the staff parking was in the back, as I remember. Is there still going to be an exit off the back for the staff?
There is still an exit back there. We're not proposing that to be anything other than if a truck or two each day have to exit out and/or your staff parking, which is going to be back there. As discussed, I believe, in previous meetings, we're going to label that as staff parking only. And we're not encouraging anybody to be driving out that way. Technically, the drive-through, the way we're running it now, will block that driveway for anybody going out. You know, so it's not, it's not like if, if we, if we have a busy drive-through, nobody would be able to exit out that way anyways, other than, you know, a staff member coming in or who's parked back there, which is, I think, five or six spots or something like that.
Okay.
So now we've got almost no traffic going out to Narragansett Ave. Compared to before, we looked at probably one-third of the traffic from our building would have been exiting out onto Narragansett. Now there's virtually none. You might have a couple dozen employees a day that might be parking out there. Not everybody drives a car. Not everybody would be, be using that. So it's, it'll be down to minimal.
All right, and one, one quick clarification, Amy. Doesn't the town council approve liquor licenses?
Yes, they do. So this, um, th- this is their penultimate step before going to the council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else, this, this witness?
Mr. Chair, uh, this is
Go ahead.
Rob Cagnetta, uh, Mr. Levesque, um, so is that back gate going to be just a open gate or not even a gate? Is it going to be just open?
Yeah, there's not proposed any gate there. It's going to be an open driveway. We proposed only a right turnout. We're going to continue to maintain that. So we're not suggesting anybody go left. You'll also see that in Josh Rosen's plan. But it's, it's not going to be a gate that we swing open back and forth.
And as for the, um, the drive-through, I mean, it's going to be pretty clear that that's not necessarily an exit, right, to go through the back.
Crystal, yeah, with the signage that we're putting up, and it'll be, it'll be clear that that's not, it's not, it's not proposed as an exit. That's a drive-through lane. It's marked, it's marked on our plan, which Robert Kenyon, our, our traffic guy, would, would attest to. It's marked on the plan that it's a drive-through lane. And if you're going back there, you're going to go into the drive-through.
Okay. And it's not really a shortcut to go out that way?
Nope, not at all. Exactly. It'll be, it'll be a longer distance for anybody. So unless somebody lived in the back, you know, somebody lives on Narragansett, could they use it? Absolutely. You know, but it's not going to be a shortcut where someone's going to say, hey, I want to get out again, take the long way home. And the good thing about the drive-through now, and my team will speak about, is that we really don't have any more blocking in our property line now out in front because of the rerouting of all the traffic around the building. So technically, someone could drive around our parking lot relatively easily and get out, where before it was going to be a little trickier. It's a little bit of a tighter parking lot. So no one's going to want to be driving out back. They're going to be exiting out front.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, board members, anything further for this witness? Okay, Mr. Callahan, go right ahead.
I'd like to ask if Josh Rosen could be sworn as, as an expert. I know he's testified before your board many times, including tonight, and he can explain the site plan, please.
Okay, Mr. Rosen, just for the record, just tell us a little bit about yourself, please, so we, it's on the record.
Yep, thank you, Mr.
Give me your, spell your name, obviously, first, and I hate to do this, but it's for the record, please.
No problem. Josh Rosen, R O S E N, registered Rhode Island professional engineer and partner with Principi Engineering, Inc., office at twenty-seven Secana Ridge Drive in Tiverton. I'm obviously a registered civil engineer for thirteen years now. I've had experience in the private sector, land development in my current position for the past nearly three years. Before that, as a town engineer in South Kingstown for nearly four years. And prior to that, I headed a land development department at Commonwealth Engineers at a firm in Providence. And I'm here before you tonight to represent Mr. Levesque on the project in front of you. So if you'd like to swear me in, I can certainly give details on the site plan.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, hold the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, just tell us quickly, you've testified many times before boards all over the state, including this board, right?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, board members, does anybody have a problem with this gentleman being, uh, considered an expert witness? Okay, I hear no one, so, uh, so be it. Expert witness. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you. So I just want to make a, a couple of notes on the plan. Jess, thank you for pulling that sheet up. That's perfect. So sheet number three of our plan set is our site layout plan. Now, I know we discussed some changes to the plan. I'm just going to focus on what this plan represents and how it's designed in its current state. If anybody wants to ask me questions about similarities or differences from the previous version, that's fine. But obviously, this is now the plan that is in the forefront for the application, so I'm just going to stick with some of the details and try to focus on the park and the circulation and what's going on with the building, because that has the most impact on the discussion tonight relative to the special use permit for at least the drive, the drive-through end of things. So, property address, we're on one fifty-one Old Tower Hill Road. As mentioned before, this building that's currently on the site was home to the old feet first and zero Wampum. Now, that building, the way it's situated, obviously, is an L-shaped structure along the easterly end of the property and the southerly end. The easterly end is the Hal's garage. To the west on this property is Taco Bell and Kentucky Fried Chicken. But the L-shaped along the east and along the south is how the building is comprised of approximately eleven thousand square feet a day. All the parking was out front with additional parking in the back. The site is entirely, nearly entirely impervious in its current state. Access and egress to the property now is central to its frontage along Old Tower Hill Road on the north end of the site. The area in the, in the rear of the property that we'll be discussing is all paved, but there is a fence along that property line. It does have frontage on Narragansett Avenue West. So Mr. Levesque is proposing to, uh, remove a portion or portions of this building and repurpose it to, to fit his, uh, his needs moving forward. Out of the eleven thousand square feet, there's approximately five thousand square feet of building that will be removed. A majority of that building is the front portion of the L or the, uh, the most, um, the, the piece of the building that's nearest to Old Tower Hill Road along Hal's garage. That section of building, as well as the southeastern corner, will be removed to create the shape of this building the way you see it on this sheet that's on the presentation tonight. The, the eastern end of the building, the left-hand side, looking at it from the street, will be occupied by the Brewed Awakenings facility, about thirty-five hundred square feet. There are a couple other ancillary, uh, office, um, spaces created on the westerly end of the building, uh, two additional separate, um, office spaces, approximately, um, a thousand to thirteen hundred square feet in size for those individual units. The building's going to be, uh, again, repurposed, and the front of the building will have an, an overhang and a, uh, a patio area in the front, as, as was discussed. All of the new parking that is created for customers will be out in front of the building. There's a. Going to be thirty four spaces, I believe, right now. That's what we're showing on our plan for customer parking. Um, in the front of the building. In the rear of the building, there are five uh, employee spaces. The employee spaces are at the southerly end of the site. They'll be marked accordingly. Uh, they'll be accessible only for the employees. Um, the southern end of the site behind the building is also where we've accommodated the requisite loading area. Uh, for the loading vehicle associated with uh, this particular use. Um, as Mr. Levec spoke to and um, Attorney Callahan. We have now established this drive through lane. Around the westerly side of the building. Around the southerly side of the building and exiting out the easterly side of the building. So almost um, you know, three sides of this building. Will be used for the drive through lane, very effective in the sense that if you look at the schematic here. We're able to accommodate about sixteen vehicles stacked from. The actual drive through window around the back inside of the building without impacting any of the circulation pattern. Um, out in front for the normal customers or for the, for the visiting customers through the main entrance. Um, so that was a very effective change. Obviously, um, that goes hand in hand with the location of where these vehicles going through the drive through will exit. Uh, we now are exiting back into the normal flow of traffic in the front of the building. Um, which means that that drive through circulation uh, puts the exiting traffic also back onto Old Tower Hill Road. Uh, at the main point of the access and egress to the site. So um, certainly, Miss Levec compromised uh, in this new plan by making the building smaller. Um, originally, there was another eleven feet of building. On the easterly end where you now see the drive through window. We needed to create clearance and space around the building, so we had to. Uh, make amendments to the size of the building, but. Again, it's certainly a more favorable plan, we felt, for circulation. Um, and also it helps us to utilize only the primary. Uh, access and and egress point to the site rather than re- relying on the um, Narragansett Avenue. Uh, west location for exiting traffic. Um, so Mr. Butler, who's here with us uh, tonight as well, will probably discuss a little bit about the landscape. But a a great benefit to Mr. uh, Levec's vision was the fact that. Um. This site becomes more modestly used in the sense of this building and and the parking. We're able to put back some landscape and green space. There's a space for a bike rack in front of the building. There's a landscape far um, exceeding what's there now. We've met the regulations through the planning department's development plan review by creating the green space up in the front. Of the property along Old Tower Hill Road and the interior islands, as well as some perimeter landscaping. So the site certainly has a very effective aesthetic to it now, um, based on this plan. Um, and just, you know, as another uh, point of emphasis. To the enhancements of the site, there was some uh, stormwater management improvements. That um, obviously, we we discuss in detail at the uh, planning. Or level, but the front ends of the site at the westerly and easterly corner. Are rain garden type planted vegetated uh, stormwater treatment areas. Uh, that assists with some of that impervious runoff. That's something. That's an added benefit to the site that is not there now. So. Um, in a nutshell, that's, those are the main components of this site plan. And, you know, again, the the circulation and and the drive through. Uh, traffic is is kind of something that drove this plan at the end here. And we feel it's a very effective use of the property for the redevelopment to meet the needs of both the client and what's going on in the rest of the corridor. On Old Tower Hill Road. So. Um, before, I think James, Attorney Callahan gets to the other experts, if anybody has. Any questions for me on the site plan or the circulation or or how we got to this point. Um, I feel free to answer anything that the board may have.
Tell us a little bit parking. Okay, how did you ascertain how much parking you need and?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So the the parking um. The way it is uh, identified on this plan. The space for Brewed Awakenings, based on your zoning ordinance, uh, has a certain parking requirement based on the occupants. So uh, we utilize the architect's plan for the building uh, based on the code requirements inside the space. And there's a maximum number of arc occupants that can uh, fit in that building. Um, that relates to the parking that's required for Brewed Awakenings. Then obviously, we had um, the space for the office or retail. Um, the the two other spaces within the building. Those have a a parking requirement in and of themselves. So uh, what we found was that we needed a minimum of thirty eight parking spaces on site. Uh, again, plus a loading area. And so uh, we developed a plan to identify, you know, at least a thirty eight. We were able to achieve thirty nine spots on uh, parking spaces on the site. Um, as well as that loading area. Um, and another thing that Mr. Levec uh, had us uh. Put together within this plan were um. Parking spaces that were wider than the minimum requirements. Um, and he felt that his his customer clientele would have a much more comfortable circulation and in and out of those parking spaces by utilizing. Uh, in in a sense, a nine and a half foot wide space. Uh, when usually we uh, we can use an industry standard of a minimum nine foot wide space. So. The spaces out front of the building are a little more comfortable. And again, the number of spaces required on the site. Uh, we happen to have one more than than are required by the zoning ordinance. A stat just in in on one more, a quick thing about. Um, the stacking. Well, when we say stacking, we mean basically queuing at a drive through. And when we talk about the queuing or the stacking, um, in this case, like Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Um, has a regulation that from the order board or from where the menu board is located. You have to accommodate at least. Ten vehicles stacked on your own property, so it would not impact the normal. Uh, flow on the state highway or on the adjacent roads. Um, obviously, as I mentioned, this diagram shows sixteen total from the drive through window. Um, I'm like to point out that the actual order board, the way it's called out here, you'll see it. Just off of the back of the building in the middle, so the southerly end of the building, the southerly side of the building in the middle. We've called out the order board. That's actually where you order. We've got the ten vehicles that stack. To the um, northwesterly corner of the building. Um, and stay out of the main flow of traffic. So we are well within. The parameters that um, would govern this site relative to what the DOT require. It's are on the stacking uh, from the, from the menu board or the order board. And obviously, we're showing an additional. Um. A handful to six, seven of uh, stacked vehicles uh, between the order board and the actual drive through window. So. Um, the site works very comfortably. But um, anyway, long way around your. Uh, question or to the answer of your question, uh, Mr. Chair, that. The thirty nine spaces are provided. We needed thirty eight by ordinance.
Okay, board members, questions for this gentleman? Anybody?
You know, I have a question. Um, the order board is where you order. Coffee or whatever you want. And then you drive on to another window. Is that correct?
Uh, right now, the way this is uh, situated. The order board is, you'll be ordering from that location. At the menu board and you'll drive up to uh, pay and receive your goods at the drive through window.
Okay, thank you.
Side of the building.
Got it.
Okay.
Right? Anyone else? Questions for him?
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Uh, this is Rob Cagnetta. Um, I have, uh, in terms of um, the dumpster and loading zone in the back part of the property.
Yes.
Um, is uh, what's the area for the dumpster? Because I'm assuming it's a a two and a half yarder. Uh, one that that dumps onto a uh, truck, like they pick it up with the hooks sort of.
Yeah, so that's an eight, so the area that is shown on this plan is an eight by eight enclosure. Uh, talk to Mr. Levec, that size of that dumpster that will be within that enclosure is similar to his other uh, locations. Uh, the the dump truck um, would pull straight onto or into that area. And um, you know, empty. Uh, the dumpster and continue out. Um. But it's an eight by eight enclosure around that dumpster location.
So the 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 cab of of the truck that you draw on here would essentially be the location of the of the dump, of the uh. Waste truck.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay, because I I thought that was like a parking space for a truck. And you wouldn't have enough room for a truck to pull perpendicular to that. So um.
Basically. Now, what we talked about with Mr. Levec when we planned the site, we we got a pretty good idea of when any of his delivery vehicles. Uh, typically uh, have their routes to his stores versus when his uh, trash, you know, deliveries or his trash pickup is and. Um, that you, that area is is a good sized area, but the way it's um, identified here, it work, it will work well with a shared space where the. You know, the loading, um, you know, likely will not be used at the same time that is uh, trash pickup happens. Um.
And Mr. Levesque, that that's enough room for both uh, uh, waste and recycling, that eight by eight area? If assuming that you'll have that.
Yes, it is. And compared to our other locations, we have all of our trash removal done. Normally before we even open up or just within the first hour or so that we open up each location. So it does not interfere in with any deliveries or general traffic within our our locations. And that's all contracted out through uh, the dumpster people that we use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Levesque, just very quickly, is from where the loading zone is. If I'm assuming you're getting deliveries there, how do they get into the building? From that loading zone? I mean, would they go?
There'll be several doors that we'll have in the back over there.
Okay.
You'll see on the plan that Josh put together. We only needed a ten foot driveline. We made a twelve foot driveline. And then we also have almost a six and a half foot walkway. Along the back, which is, I believe you can see it marked out in the back of the building.
Okay.
Several doors in the back for anybody to drive in a walk in product.
Okay. Okay, what what's typical deliver, what 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 do you get delivered there? I mean, is it the, is it tractor trailers that are bringing stuff in? What what would be?
Sometimes Gordon Foods is our biggest vendor, used to be Perkins, now it's G F S. Uh, they do have tractor trailers. Sometimes they're big, sometimes they're medium size. Uh, they would pull in. They might even be sometimes early in the day, they pull in. If it's early in the morning. They weren't even pulling back. They might just pull up front and unload real quick and in and out. Other trucks would be I am money dairy out of Warwick. Uh, um, they deliver all of our dairy, so they'd be showing up. Uh, we got a bakery out of uh. New Haven that delivers all our bread. Um, you know, they show up, but they're they're more or less pull right up front. Walk in the front door, bring stuff in. Um, we have NASA Produce shows up with the, you know, regular box trucks, you know, which would be about half the size of the truck that you see there. And that's typically about maybe a a five or six minute delivery. Um, and liquor license would be, you know, uh, the liquor distributors that would show up. They use one truck, even though there's several distributors. They kind of. Have this co-op trucking delivery system. They're normally early in the morning uh, or mid afternoon that they deliver. Um, and some of those guys would just pull up right in the regular lane of traffic out front, maybe even unload and not even use the back, but. Um, very few big trucks. G F S would be the only locate, only vendor that we deal with. That could show up in a big truck. But the design that we have here and the space that we have and based on the times that they deliver. Um, we would never have an issue with a truck getting in or out.
All right, board members, questions for Mr. Rosen or Mr. Levesque? No? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask uh, Josh or Mr. Rosen, one more question about uh, utilities and reference to locations, availability and compatibility with the site.
Go ahead.
Uh, sure, thanks, James. Um. Jess, do you have the ability to maybe put up the fourth sheet perhaps in that set? Or sheet four rather? Perfect, perfect, thank you. Um, so this is the the grading utility plan, but. Uh, I think what Mr. Callahan was getting at, um, the site, the building today has a lot of the services. Uh, we'll just either reuse or reconnect. Um, most of the services to the building will now be on the eastern end of the site or eastern side of the site. Um, there was a sewer connection that's already uh, made at Old Tower Hill Road. It was a water service connection. And a gas service connection. Um, we'll have to disconnect appropriately from the existing building, but then reconnect for the new building. Um, the electric service comes off of uh, this, the side shared with house. There's a utility pole there and a service that. Um, it would be connected to. Um, again, there's some onsite drainage that. Uh, was present. There was an lot of treatment, but there were uh, some catch basins in the front corner of the property. There was a. Uh, a catch basin at the southwestern corner of the building. Uh, we're going to reuse some of that to accept our roof drains and send it into the state system. Uh, after it gets treated up front in the uh, in the two rain garden locations. Um, so a complete public service as far as utilities, uh, re- reutilizing everything that's. Um, already to the site today. There, there's no uh, physical new connections in Old Tower Hill Road. And again, the stormwater improvements uh, were very well received by uh, Rhode Island Department of Transportation, especially. Um, as as it coincides with their current effort uh, of as far as the corridor improvements that are going on in that area. Um, so, but that's um, that's, those are the uh, couple of points on the utilities.
About lighting, Mr. Rosen, what do you, what what do you see about, what what's the plan there? The parking lot, whatever, yeah.
Currently, um, and Mr. Levec can um, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we have not proposed any exterior uh, pole lighting necessarily, but I know for security reasons. And for other safety reasons, there will be wall pack uh, lighting on the building. Um, you know, down downward lit, um, shielded lighting, uh, but nothing proposed. Uh, maybe some low lying lamps in the islands, uh, but no light pole fixtures. Um, David, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, right now, we're not showing poles out there, but any lighting that we will do on the outside around the building. Will all be of a twenty eight hundred K, so it's more of a yellow. Soft, warm type lighting, just like at all my other locations. Nothing is really bright. It's more romantic, uh, subdued type setting, so it looks cool at night. Um. I should say it's warm at night. Um. Uh, and that would be around the building through the whole drive through area, stuff like that. So it's nice and. Lit, but nice, soft, warm, yellow type lighting, just like you'd go by if either Warwick. Which is obviously a big location. We got pole lighting. We had all that turned over. Through rab lighting, all twenty hundred K and it's, it's. It's not like a lit up Walmart parking lot. It's it's kind of very subdued. Uh, but here, there's no proposed poles. There is laying ample lighting on the street and stuff that lights up that parking lot. But it would just be the wall packs and stuff that we would use. It would also be that rab lighting.
Okay, could you just very quickly just describe what kind of food you are, would you be offering? What what would your menu like? I mean, is it, I mean, not not in great depth, but just what are you, what are you selling in there?
You're hungry, huh?
Yeah, it's been a long night, trust me.
Well, we start out in the morning. You can get uh, muffins, bagels, Danish egg sandwiches. We make fresh egg sandwiches. For, you know, every single day. Um, you could get, uh, you know, a a lox sandwich, smoked salmon. Uh, you move into the afternoon and you can get uh, cookies and biscottis. You get a turkey club, a panini, grilled pizza. Um, now it's on our locations. We do, you know, chicken wings or nachos. Uh. Um, Providence is going to have a little more extensive menu. We might even do a little bit more here too. Um, with, you know, maybe some hot food, so we can get a little bit more of that evening business. But all types of panini sandwiches, uh, turkey club, B L Ts, uh. Um, salads, various salads, um. Acai bowls with fruit, fruit cups, yogurt cups. Uh, all sorts of frozen drinks, espresso based drinks, coffees, iced coffees, sodas, juices and all those other.
And they can get those things even if you stayed open on a Saturday night till ten or eleven, if you're drinking. They could still get something to eat or what what's the thought on that?
You can get anything on our menu at any time of the day from when we.
Okay.
We'll wait until one minute before we close.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Callahan?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to ask uh, Mr. Robert Clinton from V H B to talk about the traffic and also ask him to um. Give his credentials and be sworn as an expert if he does meet those uh. And I'm sure, sure he will, but uh, just give his background if he could.
Okay, Mr. Clinton, would you spell your name, please, for the record?
Okay, Robert Clinton, R O B E R T. Clinton, C L I N T O N.
Okay, so do you swear to tell, do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so I hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Tell us a little about yourself.
Sure, I'm a.
Sure, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island. I've been working as an engineer since nineteen eighty-six. Worked on numerous DOT projects such as the Providence Viaduct, Route thirty-seven, Washington Bridge Project. Also work on private developments such as Chapelview, large projects like that, Stop and Shop, CBS. Worked for a lot of schools and institutions, Brown, URI. Extensive experience in signal design, also traffic signal design and various aspects of transportation and traffic engineering.
Okay, have you testified in similar proceedings in the past?
Yes, I have, I throughout Rhode Island and also in southeastern Mass.
Okay, Mr. Callahan, I assume you'd like him to be an expert witness, or no?
Yes, please, sir.
Okay, board members, does anyone have a problem with me making this gentleman an expert witness? Okay, no, okay, so so, Mr. Rosen, you have a problem?
No.
No? Okay, so be it. Okay, Mr. Clinton, go ahead.
Okay, a lot of my thunder has been stolen. A lot of the changes that have been made to the plan have improved traffic circulation, traffic stacking. We've met with the town early in the process and talked about onsite circulation, trip generation. Met met the town's requirements at that point. The plans have only become better by taking the drive-through window from the west side of the building and moving it to the east side of the building. The stacking, the sixteen vehicle stacking far exceeds the DOT standards. And as far as the traffic exiting the site through the rear driveway, that's gonna be pretty much non-existent as has been discussed previously. Which should should make for more orderly circulation around the building and and less impacts to the neighborhood behind the site. The, we we have met with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation also. We're in the process of of responding to their comments. And we expect to receive a a physical alteration permit after we resubmit this new layout and a revised traffic study, which will address all of their concerns.
And Mr. Clinton, can you also address the ingress and egress to the lot?
Sure, the main, I don't know if we can pull the site plan up again. The 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 existing access driveway will be reused and it's gonna provide full access to the site. As was briefly discussed, the Rhode Island Department of Transportation has a corridor improvement project going on along Old Tower Hill Road, which will improve the traffic signal, which is located at the Wakefield Mall House entrance, which is located to the east of our site driveway. It will also add medians and bike accommodations along the corridor. So with those proposed improvements, the the signal will be, there will be modifications to the signal and the signal timings will be upgraded at that point to reduce congestion at the intersection and reduce the queues on the approaches. So so coming into the site, a- as you enter, there's a there's a pavement marking, a right arrow, which will guide vehicles entering the site to the right or westbound, and then they'll go around the island and will be able to either park in front of the building or proceed south on the plan and around the the building. At the at the southwest corner of the building, there will be a drive-through with a a left turn arrow on the pavement directing traffic to proceed counterclockwise around the building to the order board, which, as Josh mentioned earlier, is located in the in the rear of the building about midway. And at that point, we have ten vehicle stacking around back the direction they came. Doesn't impact the aisle in front of the building. Then after the order board, there are six vehicles are able to stack while their orders being processed. And and then they'll proceed north along the house property on the east side of the property and be able to take a left and then a right out out of the main driveway. So so the circulation is is basically counterclockwise around around the site. The the rear of the building, we've talked about that before, the loading and the employee parking with access out into Narragansett Ave West.
And these plans are taken into account pedestrian safety and convenience as well, especially considering the improvements on the corridor, correct?
Yes.
And also, this is all has to do with consideration for access in case of fire, emergency or catastrophe.
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, um, this is, you know, the the plan has evolved since since we met with the town initially and I think this is a far superior plan than what what was originally. The first one was adequate and this is goes above and beyond meeting all all requirements.
Okay. Anything else with the Callahan for this witness?
Thank you, no.
Okay, board members, questions for this gentleman? Anybody?
Yeah, I have a question, Tom Daniel. So what what if I want to come out the exit and go left?
Yeah, that's a good question. We our our traffic study includes the the traffic signal located at located to the east. We looked at the queues here. The way the signal operates is there is a an eastbound advanced phase which goes, which accommodates the left turns into the Wakefield Mall. So that phase goes first and and then the any queued vehicles in in front of the driveway. The the ninety-fifth, it's important to note that the the fiftieth percentile queue, which means that fifty percent of the time the queue at the signal will extend to the to the side driveway. So fifty percent of the time there is not going to be a queue in front of this driveway. Okay, so that advanced phase clears, then vehicles exiting the site have the ability to get out as the westbound phase begins. And so the the queues at the driveway are projected to be, based on our analysis, one and possibly two vehicles, that's the ninety-fifth percentile, so ninety-five percent of the time, there'll be less than less than two vehicles queued at the driveway to get out.
Okay, you you did testify that there's a median, is that a raised median?
Not not entirely, not the entire length of Old Tower Hill Road. There are certain segments along Old Tower Hill Road that will have medians, and that's to accommodate pedestrian crossings at at some of the locations actually down by Narragansett Ave West, where where the restaurant is, Kabuki. There there is gonna be a median down at that area, and that'll help pedestrians cross halfway and then cross the other half of the way. There'll be a refuge area kind of for pedestrians. But there there is no though, no medium proposed in this immediate area.
One final question, when was your study done?
Yeah, we we, as you know, the the volumes now are reflective of normal conditions. So we use the and DOT has encouraged this. We've used the traffic volumes from the DOT study, which was done in two thousand eighteen. So so we use those traffic volumes to, and and then we increase them for two years of background growth with a quarter percent growth per year to reflect twenty twenty traffic volumes.
Well, I guess my question is more towards what month you did the traffic study, because as you know, we have a fairly large increase of traffic in the summer months on Tower Hill Road.
Yeah, yeah, ours were done in July, they were done in July of two thousand eighteen, the traffic volumes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for this gentleman?
Yes, Bill Rosen here.
Go ahead, Bill.
You mentioned signage, or you you've done signage before. What kinds of signs are gonna be on this property?
Yeah, i- in addition to the pavement markings, there will also be do not enter signs, one-way signs to direct traffic and and to indicate where, which direction to go and which directions not to go.
Are there gonna be any lighted signs indicating the stabilizer itself or something like that?
The the oh, the owner and site engineer can maybe address that question?
Can you, Mr. Callahan, do you think the guys can address that for Mr. Rosen? Just tell us what the light, what are you looking at for signs, signage and whatever on your bill to, you know, for the building?
Yeah, this is Dave Levek. On the front of the building, just like at all of other other locations, we will have, it's called the high density foam signs that we would make to resemble the letters of Brut Awakenings and or any other tenant. And if we light those up, they're gonna be gooseneck type lightings from rab lighting, which would also be that same soft yellow light twenty eight hundred K is what it's referred to. There is an existing sign out in front of the property, which is grandfathered in, that really nice ugly feet first sign that stands there, not that the feet first was ugly, but the sign itself is not appealing. We know we have the right to keep that. We're not going to keep it, we're gonna take that sign down. The only thing I'm proposing is what you saw on the original plan that we sent over last time, which was a a wall type, like little stone wall that we were gonna put up in the front of the I wanna say west side corner where the landscaping is, that would say Brut Awakenings down low. So if you're driving down Old Tower Hill Road, you're not going to see any big sign blaring out that says McDonald's or XYZ, you're not gonna see that. You would only notice it as you approach the property, that wall sign that would be on that front grass slash planted tree area that mock landscape we'll talk about. And on the buildings, on the building, which would be no more than three tenants there.
Thank you.
Improve the look of the property with the signage piece.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Callahan, what else?
Just one other question, Mr. Clinton. Mr. Clinton, isn't it fair to say that your company, VHB, did the consulting for DOT on the Old Tower Hill Road improvements?
No, those were done by, actually, those were done by PAR Engineering.
And was one of your associates part of that plan? Was it Sky Levin? Was she part of it as well?
Well, we've we've reviewed the plans that were done by by PAR Engineering, and we are consultants that do peer reviews for the DOT for multiple projects.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Callahan?
We have Mr. Butler to talk about the landscaping, and I believe he's on the line as well.
Okay, Mr. Butler, are you there? Okay, you've got to unmute yourself. You're muted. You know how to do that? There you go. Okay, can you give, spell your name, please?
Mark Butler, M A R K B U T L E R.
Okay, Mr. Butler, do you swear to tell the truth, hold true, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
Mr. Butler, could you give us some background in your experience as a landscape architect?
Yeah, I've been licensed since two thousand ten, I graduated from URI in two thousand three, I worked for a firm up in Providence, East Providence, actually, for a number of years. Gatesleyton, they've since been absorbed by, not PAR, but another firm. I worked on a couple of different projects for Moses Brown, including some permitting for them, Brown and Howard's Wharf over in Newport. I did a couple of different things for the Gordon School, I worked for Bennington Workforce Housing and brought them through a bunch of permitting issues with zoning. And I've been in private practice now since two thousand fifteen, after working for various other firms all around the state.
And you've tested before boards and commissions in the past in Rhode Island?
I have.
And, Mr. Chairman, I asked Mr. Butler to be qualified as an expert as well.
Okay, board members, anyone have a problem with Mr. Butler being qualified as an expert? Go ahead, so be it.
Yeah, so I would agree that this is, the overall plan has been a huge improvement since the last version that we saw. As far as just increasing the ability to place plants and increase the landscaping. So I'm really pleased with this latest iteration. Essentially, much of the project has stayed the same, there's a couple of areas where we had to we had the benefit of being able to increase the landscape depth, most notably as you pull in on the right-hand side, which would be the front western side, that bed got deeper. One of the things I'm most happy with about this landscape plan is the fact that we're able to incorporate some rather large trees, which I think is greatly needed up and down Tower Hill Road there. So we have three London plane trees within the parking area, which we're gonna develop a nice big canopy, they're far enough back from the roadway where they shouldn't be impacted by any issues with circulation, with any issues with cars, utilities, we've included structural soil within the planting areas to ensure that those plants are gonna be able to develop properly and be healthy. Then basically along the side of house, we have a nice tall wall of evergreen plants that are gonna be well behaved, about three feet wide, it's a smart guard, arborvitae, they're gonna be about me twenty, thirty feet tall. That's gonna give a nice green wall and separation, visible, visible such separation as you drive up and down Tower Hill, so you won't be seeing the backside of house after the building is demolished and that one wing of this new development has been taken away. So from the street, I believe that this is gonna be a huge improvement over what exists currently, and I'm really happy with it.
Mr. Bu- oh, sorry. Mr. Butler, is that the the plan on the screen now? Is that the old plan or the new plan?
That looks like, I'm looking at my phone. That appears to be the old plan, hold on. No, that's the the plan on the screen right now isn't the landscape plan.
Yeah, they just gonna go down, down two pages.
No, that's, that's the old plan you guys have. I know that submitted the new plan, I don't know why it's not up.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, the new plan certainly is different than the snip that I just saw.
Go to the site plan, at least you can describe it from the site plan, I would think.
Yeah, if you guys want to put the site plan up right now, I'm looking. Not the site plan, but yeah, as you
I'll interrupt you, Mark, one second. It's Josh. Jess, if I send you the, an email of the plan right now? Oh, there.
I I think I have it now, sorry.
Okay.
Yep, there you go. Yeah, so the the major difference between the old plan and the new plan is the internal islands within the parking area, they were actually able to get a little bit wider, so that it's gonna be beneficial to the health of the plants that we're proposing to put in. The bed that is off of Tower Hill Road has been deepened, there's a little bit more room there, so we can spread plants out, it won't be overcrowded, but we can get a good diversity of plants, so that it's gonna feel much more substantial from Tower Hill Road. And then as you drive east of Tower Hill Road towards Route one, now that that wing of the building is gonna be eliminated, you're essentially gonna expose the backside of house garage, which, you know, isn't the most attractive looking building, but what we've done there is we've put in a row of arborvitae's, which are suited to that sort of narrow bed width. They only get to be about three, four feet wide and twenty feet tall, so they're going in about eight feet tall. And it's gonna give a nice green wall, so that as you're driving around the And it's going to give a nice green wall, so that as you're driving around the building, you're going to have a nice green edge there. Other than that, for the most part, the, the planting has remained pretty much the same as what we saw last year at one point. The signage out on, on the street is complimented by seasonal plantings, perennials, grasses. There's going to be good color. It's going to be suited towards the drainage component that we had to deal with as far as what was reflected on Josh's plan for the rain garden. So all those plants are suited for that that rain garden application, but they also have the benefit of being interesting as far as color and texture. And along the edge with Taco Bell, there's some existing plantings which aren't going to be touched. There's a little bit of an issue with the property line sort of going along there. We've complimented an existing fence by putting in a bunch of evergreens, mint berry hollies, which are gonna go further to increase the separation between the two properties.
And we have no further questions from Mr. Butler.
Okay, board members, questions for this gentleman? Okay, all right, none. All right, Mr. Callahan, what else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that basically concludes our presentation of experts.
Okay. All right, there's, there's any, we're going to give you, we're going to see if anyone wants to comment in the audience, but.
Rick, this is aim.
Yeah.
Could we reopen or give the, the other applicants on the agenda the opportunity, have their petitions continued? Because I think we announced at the beginning of the meeting, we wouldn't be taking new applications before ten o'clock.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, why don't we do that? It's nine fifty-two. So obviously, we're, we're not gonna, by ten o'clock, we're not going to get to anything else. Well, Amy should, should, at this point, I mean, it's eight minutes. Why don't we just continue everything over?
Yes, that's, that's what I should have said. Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, Amy, do I have to? Do we have to, have to ask someone to list each one and continue it, or can we just continue the remainder?
You can, you know, you don't have to read the full text of each and every application, but why don't we just list off the applicant name and property address for the record?
Okay, then I'll do that. Okay, with regard to the petition of Kevin and Catherine Moore, the property location is thirty Ocean Avenue. The petition of Compass School. Property location is five-three-seven Old North Road, okay? The petition of Heidi Henderson and Stephen Rogers. The property location is sixteen Elm Street. And the petition of Manny Vera, okay? The property location is Parkwood Drive. I think I have them all. With regard to those, would someone make a motion to have those go over to next month? We'll have to do that, Amy?
Well.
No, not next week.
Yeah, next week, yeah. And I think the only thing you can say is if any of those applicants can't make next week, they should raise their hand now.
Okay, did, all right, right? Any of you who cannot make, any of those people who were associated with those applications, either for them or against them or here, could you wave your hand or raise your hand? And we'll call you so we can hear from you right now. Tell them how to do that again, Jess.
To raise your hand, you're going to, everyone's here, you're just going to hit the three little buttons that'll pop up on your name, and you can raise your hand there. Laura Kokorian, who is for thirty Ocean Avenue, has raised her hand.
Laura, is she the only one, or is someone else?
She's the only one who's raised her hand, so she's unmuted.
Okay, Laura, are you there? She's still muted. I see a little thing X through her.
Okay, she's good. Sorry, can you hear me?
You're unmuted. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. It's Laura Kokorian. I'm just wondering, could you give me a date? What is the date of the meeting, please?
Next Wednesday.
The twenty-second.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me, as long as it's fine with my client.
Okay, okay, all right. Would someone make a motion to have those go? Do we have to do that, Amy?
Yes, please make a, please.
All right, someone make a motion and have those four go over.
I moved the four petitions as read into the record by the chairman, move, he moved to January, I'm sorry, July twenty-second.
Okay, so be it. Who can, motion made by Mr. Daniels, someone second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mark, okay? Any discussion?
You know, I would just say, if this application is also continued, I, I think, right, everyone's on notice. Next week might be busy too. Um, as I said, there is a fifth Wednesday. We haven't pulled the board about that, but I just want everyone to be aware. There's a possibility that this one might be continued to next week as well.
Okay, all right, let's get back to that last motion. Okay, second by Mr. Mark, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have, it goes over, they, those four go over till next week. Okay, let's get back to, Mr. Callahan, you have finished your presentation at this point?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, what, what I'm going to do now is ask anyone in the audience, and then if in fact, we'll give you, you can, you can come back and, and answer any questions or whatever. All right. Jessica has explained to you how you can raise your hand to get recognized. Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or opposition to the Levesque petition? This is the Brut Awakenings petition. Anyone?
I have someone, Virginia Kenny, who's raised her hand.
Okay, Virginia, are you there?
She just needs to unmute herself.
Unmute, unmute yourself, Virginia. I still see her muted. I see a little X through your microphone. There you go. Are you there, Virginia? Hello? Virginia? No one.
She just muted herself.
She muted herself, yeah. Try again, Virginia. See if you can raise your hand again and see if you. This is the problem, this whole Zoom thing, it's.
There we go. You're unmuted now.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Virginia, would you, would you spell your name, please?
It's Virginia. Last name is Kenny, K-E-N-N-Y.
Okay, Virginia, you just swear to tell the truth, hold the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to say we're very happy that there is a change in the drive-through, no longer exiting on Narragansett Avenue West. So I have three statements or questions. Are the hours of the drive-through going to be the same as when the restaurant is open?
Give us all three questions, and then we'll get the answers.
In other words, is the drive-through open all day as long?
Okay, all right, so we'll, so we'll get you, we'll get your questions on that. What else you got?
That's fun. It would be really nice if there was a possibility of there being a physical gate onto Narragansett Avenue West. There's something that goes on in these secluded parking lots at night. There are meetups or rendezvous. Cars come in and we don't really know what they're doing, but it, it's well after hours. It goes out in the parking lot behind KFC, which is wide open. There's a gate there, but it's no longer closed when they close at ten o'clock. It's, it's a concern when we see people meeting in parking lots, and it, it just looks very questionable. And then I'd like to ask Mr. Levek, does he hope to someday be open twenty-four hours a day like the McDonald's across the street? So, thank you very much.
Is that it for questions? Okay, okay. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Callahan, to answer those questions now before we go back on to the and see if there's anyone else who wants to comment. Go ahead. What were the hours and the?
Yep. How you doing? This is Dave, Virginia. Thank you.
Yes, hi.
Your questions? No, for the drive-through opening up twenty-four hours, no, we will not be opening up twenty-four hours.
No, the, the restaurant.
No, the restaurant won't be opening up twenty-four hours either.
Okay.
That's never going to happen. For closing off the gate, I have no problem once we close at night to close off that gate and have a gated a gate at that point. I have no issues with that whatsoever. We can accommodate you on that.
That would be very nice.
You're welcome. Thank you. And the first question was again.
Was the drive, drive through open online? The hours of the.
Yeah, the hours of the drive-through itself. When we were exiting out back, we had proposed that we would reduce the hours for the drive-through. I don't think we'll reduce the hours for the drive-through now drastically, but I will tell you that at eleven o'clock at night, we're not going to have the drive-through open. We probably will have some sort of restriction that we'll impose on ourselves. But it's not going to be open that late.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Very much, and, and we look forward to being there with you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Virginia, is that it for questions?
Uh, yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak in favor or opposition to this petition? Anyone else, Jess?
No one else has raised their hand.
Okay, all right, having heard none, I'm going to go on then. Mr. Callahan, I'm going to give you the last word. What, do you have anything you want to add? Do you want to rebut anything? There wasn't much to rebut, but go ahead.
Just short, just want to thank you again for your time. I think we covered the requisite points for approval, including the special use permits won't alter the general character of the area or impair the intent of the comprehensive plan. And we've addressed the following issues: ingress, egress, off-street parking, trash, storage, delivery, utilities, screening, buffering for the landscape plan, signs, and the general compatibility with the abutting districts. In addition, we are in favor of any conditions that the development plan approved by the planning board imposed. So we just ask for your approval tonight.
Okay, okay, board members, any general questions for any of these gentlemen before we start discussing it?
I, I have one for Mr. Levek. I'm not sure it was covered in testimony.
Go ahead.
Tom Daniels, the, the question is, on your restaurant with alcohol service, do you intend table service, or do you intend to have a bar?
We'll be doing both. We will have table service, and we have proposed putting a bar in there that somebody could sit at and have a drink or a bite to eat, just like at our other stores.
And how many people would be accommodated at the bar?
That's going to depend on the overall design when we finish. I will tell you that Warwick, we're about ten or eleven people at the bar. That will get a little bit bigger so we can accommodate larger groups, especially in this whole whole big piece and component where you have to have more social distancing. We need to account for that. Both my Johnston and Providence, I think, right now seat between fifteen and seventeen people. If I had to guess, it's probably going to be more like what it's going to be that was in the original design when we were on the west side of the property. Now that we located more on the east side, it, it is a little bit of a tighter space, so we may have to make a few accommodations and stuff like that. Now, we don't do a tremendous amount of table service now in our store, but it is something we want to work a little more toward doing. The Providence store, we've named that one Brut Awakenings Bistro and Cafe. It has a little bit of a logic kitchen, so we can do more hot foods once the city opens up, which we're not doing quite yet. And that will have a little bit of table service too, so we're thinking that we'd probably do more of that here too. So answer yes to table service, yes to, to there being a bar there for people to sit at and have a drink and a sandwich. But I would say it's probably not going to be much bigger than seventeen or eighteen seats at max. It could even be slightly smaller, but.
So based on your earlier testimony that your alcohol business is, I think you testified twelve to fifteen percent in that range.
Anywhere from seven to twelve percent right now, based on the stores that we have now.
And so that would be mostly bar business because your testimony now was that you don't do a lot of table service.
Well, even, even though there's a bar component in there, it's still not, a Brut Awakenings is still not a hangout where someone's drinking a lot of drinks. It's someone going in there and having a turkey club and sitting, having a Coke or maybe having an espresso martini after work or having a bottle of wine. So we don't anticipate any of our stores to be any more than fifteen percent business for alcohol in general, and right now it's between seven and twelve.
Okay.
Um, this is Amy. The town council, when considering the liquor license, I think they require a floor plan, so that number will be hammered out. And, and it will have to be a definite number when they get to the next step.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Chairman?
Excuse me, who's speaking?
Jessica. Um, I was asked just to remind people who are attendees there. I do have one person on the phone just to remind them how to raise their hand in case there was any question and they weren't sure. So if the, the person on the phone, it is star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. We just didn't want to miss them if they had any comments.
Okay, is there anyone, do we have to ask again? Are there any comments, people using the star nine and so be it? Anybody? Anyone, Jess?
Okay, no, no one's raising their hand, so.
Okay, all right, let's just, let's find out where we are on this thing, okay? William, Mr. Mark, what do you figure? How do you feel?
I think it's a marked improvement over what was there before. I think the accommodation for the drive-through, hopefully, it seems like it answers the biggest concerns that were put in by the neighbors. And I think the addition of the landscaping plan is, again, much improved over what we're looking at now.
Okay, so you're.
Yes.
You're good with it?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rosen, how do you feel?
I agree with Mr. Mark. It certainly is an improvement. I must say that it's going to be a, a nice addition to the, to the town. And hopefully will bring some extra economic development along that highway. I hope it doesn't turn into a Warwick type of arrangement, and I'm just glad to see that the signage is going to be muted, more or less.
Okay.
I'm for it.
You're for it. Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, I, I think you understand my concerns based on my questions. I would put an eleven o'clock closing limit if I were to go along with this. I think it's reasonable. Based on the testimony with regard to restaurant with alcohol. You heard my questions, and those are my concerns. I would put eleven o'clock closing on the facility.
Okay, all right, Mr. Cagnetta?
I would agree with Mr. Daniels on that, but I also, I think this, the, the changes made are a testament to, to the Mr. Levesque, listening to the, the neighbors. I really appreciate that. Thank you. And I, 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 I hope you the best. I, 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 I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
It's great to go last. I, I agree with everything everybody said, including you, Mr. Daniels. We do need a, a, a limit on closing time. And the gate thing, I hope we, we can get in there as well. Mr. Cagnetta, in, in that this may be your last time to ever make a motion, you want to make a motion?
Of course, it's my pleasure. I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the petition of David Levesque of thirteen ninety-five Atwood Avenue, Johnston, Rhode Island. Their special use permit under our zoning ordinance, they're seeking to establish a restaurant with alcohol accessory drive-up window and accessory entertainment to a restaurant. This does require a special u-, special use permit. They have received a favorable advisory opinion from the department, I'm sorry, from the development plan from the planning board on January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. The lot size is point nine-one acres. Tonight, a, a presentation was led by James Callahan, the, the applicant's lawyer. The applicant is Mr. Levesque. He is the owner of Brut Awakenings of several several facilities in and around Rhode Island. He's seeking to open up a, another location on Main Street here in, in Wakefield, where he's moving from South County Commons. The site is, has been left for several years, hasn't been used. And he's looking to overhaul the site to suit his, his business. He, we have heard from several professionals assisting in the project. Mr. Rosen, the engineer, talked about the occupancy versus parking spaces as well as movement around the property for vehicles and as well as trash and lighting. Mr. Clinton Um, Mr. Clinton, uh, talked about. Um, the, uh, oh geez, um. What do you talk about? I'm sorry? Was Mr. Rosen that, that he didn't talk about traffic, Mr. Clinton talked about traffic clearance, um, around the property. Um, and then Mr. Butler, uh, talked about the landscape architecture, um, and how, um, it would enhance. Um, the, the Tower Hill, old Tower Hill Road. Um, the, uh, uh, the plan was, uh, comprehensive. Um, it had, uh, changed based on the concerns over the past several weeks. By the, uh, surrounding neighbors, um, emptying on to, um. Uh, was it old, uh, Narragansett Ave? Um, uh, one, uh, a butter in particular, Ms., Ms. Kenny. Uh, asked a few questions about, uh, the drive-through, if it would be open all day. Um, she talked about a gate perhaps to Narragansett Ave West. Um, and she also asked if the drive-through would be open twenty-four hours. Um, they also talked about, um, entertainment. Um, as, as part of the request and alcohol, um, served, um, in, in the facility. Um, so, uh, they had submitted a series of revised plans. Um, I believe, um. I don't think I had the one site plan that was shown for the, uh, landscape. But, um, I think the last site plan was from seven thirteen twenty, I don't know if that's, uh, the last, the latest version. Um. And, um.
Yeah.
See. The, um. As for some of the, uh, conditions. Um, the planning board had, had recommended a, a list of conditions. And I, uh, suggest that we adopt those as, uh, part of the decision. Um, I also, uh, by Mr. Daniels suggesting that, um, it closes at eleven o'clock. Um, and, um, also, um, that. Um, and, and I guess I can find out if I can do this, if they can lock the gate every night, um, going to Narragansett West. Narragansett West, um, the only reason I hesitate because I don't know if it's a safety concern, uh, for, for accessing the back. Um, but, uh, the concern, um, was noted by Ms. Kenny about, um. Uh, uh, behavior that, that, uh. Having that gate locked, uh, would help the, the neighborhood behind. Um, so, uh, this is a special use permit. And our special use permit. Is allowed, um. Through our ordinance, um. This is, uh, the special use is authorized by our ordinance. Um, uh, by the, the use of the, uh, business. Um, for, uh, as a restaurant with alcohol, accessory drive-up window and accessory entertainment to a restaurant. Um, those are all permissible within our special use permit. Um, we find that, um, it does meet all the criteria set forth in the subsection of our ordinance. Um, allowing this, um. Uh, because it does meet the criteria, uh. Of, um, the, the, the use of, of this as well as, um. The, uh, um. Changes to, to the property, uh, we find that granting this special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or comprehensive plan of the town. We've considered, um, the satisfactory provisions and arrangements. And, uh, they're not, uh, of the following items, um, ingress and egress. Um, in particular, uh. Mr. Clinton had, had talked about, uh, the, the vehicles, um, accessing the property. He talked about the parking spaces being a little bit larger, um, uh, so, so people can move around a lot easier. Uh, the traffic flow and control, um, was all being, uh, uh, made through, um, Old Tower Hill Road. Um, and that, uh, access of, of fire emergency or catastrophe, um, would not be encumbered. Um, or, 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 or limited by any way. Um, there's plenty of off-street parking, um, the loading area was identified in the rear of the building. Uh, and in particular, um, attention to noise, glare, or other effects of, to adjoining lots. Um, and that's where Mr. Butler had talked about the landscaping, um, and how they were going to cover. Uh, the, uh, now exposed, uh, edge of, um, the autos, um, auto repair. Um, trash, storage and delivery areas, uh, are in the back of the building. And, um, there was adequate area, um, uh, to, to move. Um, utilities, uh, locations, availability and compatibility, um, they talked about lighting. Uh, where there wouldn't be any new poles, uh, mostly wall packs and some, uh, just, uh, uh, lighting. That's on, uh, uh, shorter poles perhaps. Um, the screening and buffering, uh, like I said, the, uh, uh, greenscaping. Uh, not only, um, on the side of Hal's Autobody, but also, uh, in the front. That, that's also beautifying, uh, Old Tower Hill Road. Um, signs, um, exterior lighting, uh, glares, uh, there was nothing on the plans that, that would, uh. Um, be an issue, um, and then no other required yards or other open space. Um, and the general compatibility with lots in the area. Um, uh, it is, uh, very compatible with, uh, uh, like Chop House and Hal's and. Um, uh, other, other, uh, commercial spaces. Um, and like I said, the conditions of approval close at eleven. Um, and, um, locking the back gate. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Jessica, you, you had just emailed me something, someone has their hand raised, is that? Who has their hand raised?
Attorney Callahan does.
Oh.
Sorry about that, there's one that didn't wanna interrupt, um, I was talking to Mr. Leveque during the, uh, motion. Uh, Mr. Leveque's obviously pretty accommodating with all of his requests of the neighbors. Is it a possibility that we could have the closing time at eleven on Monday? Or Sunday through Thursday and possibly till twelve on Friday and Saturday? The, we, reason we ask, because other, other more high intensity, I mean, restaurants with alcohol service, including Kabuki. Uh, Chop House are likely open till one, I don't think Mr. Leveque's looking at that type of intensity. But the option to have, uh, a little later opening on a weekend night might be an attractive option in the future. Not that he's gonna use it, but it's a possibility.
Mr. Daniels, you, you were the one who had the main concerns with this, how do you feel about that request?
Um, uh, I guess it's gonna take an amendment to the main motion.
No, but do you have, do you have any issue with it, or is that okay?
I'm comfortable at eleven o'clock, uh, seven days a week, but I'll listen to my fellow members, see what they, see what they have to say.
Okay, Mr. Cagnetta, how do you feel?
Um, I think, uh, you know, compared to, to the surrounding businesses, um, I think. It makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Rosen? How do you feel, Mr. Rosen?
Um, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Mark?
I'm okay with it as well.
Okay, as, as am I, so, uh.
So, I'll amend the motion to be, um, Sunday through Thursday to eleven. And then Friday and Saturday till twelve?
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Okay, alright, uh, motion made by Mr. Cagnetta, does anyone wanna second it?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rosen, discussion? Okay, if no discussion, let's have a vote, Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak, aye, okay, motion passes, good luck, sir, welcome to the town. Okay, I think it's, I think it's gonna be great to have you there, okay?
Awesome job, bye-bye.
Okay, alright, uh, I think then we know everything else has gone over till next week. The, uh, Jess, do we have to approve anything here? What do we got, anything?
Uh, we have minutes.
Someone wanna prove the, make a motion to approve the minutes?
For two meetings, the seventeen, twenty-fourth of June.
Okay, will someone do that?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for June seventeenth and twenty-fourth.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Rosen, will someone second it? Okay, second by Mr. Mark, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, ayes have it, okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, oh, how about a second, second by Mr. Cagnetta, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's get out of here, good night, everybody.
Good job for your last meeting.
Yep, have a good night.
Good night, guys.
Bye-bye.